Is my, my thing is turned on?
Yep.
Okay, good. Sorry. All right, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? I actually have two. We need to add a discussion of House Bill H eight fifty with regards to our budget. And also, I would like to add, I guess if we want to ask Brandon Galnick from the town office to help us review the SU budget and maybe even our own budget for this year to see where he thinks possible cuts could come from. Anyone else have anything to add to the agenda? No? Okay. We have approval of minutes from, we have three different ones to do. We got a little backed up. We have the one from December, December twelfth to do. I'll take a motion to approve. All right. So we have a motion to approve. I would like to make a small change. At the very, not at the very end, at the, uh, let's see. If you go to items for discussion under the FY twenty five budget, the end of the paragraph that starts, "There were a lot of questions about the SU budget." The last sentence says, "Weathersfield portion of the special education budget is higher this year" because based on the system we now use. And I think that's maybe a little confusing. I don't think that's true. I would change that sentence to say, "The Weathersfield portion of the SU budget is higher this year" based on the pupil counts for the three districts. Weathersfield numbers are increasing while other districts are decreasing, so our portion of the budget is larger.
There was a question about the special ed.
Yeah, there was, and that's discussed in here too, but yeah, it didn't have anything to do with why our portion was higher. It had to do with why the overall budget was higher.
And can you send me that, what you just said?
Yeah, sure.
Because that's a lot for me to write down.
Sure.
How you want it worded, or I could just delete that whole sentence. It's up to you.
Um. Yeah, I guess that sentence could just come out.
Okay, just delete that one.
Take that sentence out. Yeah, because it's, yeah, because that sentence isn't really true as written. Yeah.
Okay, I'll just delete the whole sentence.
Okay. Any other changes to it? Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Okay. Let's see. Next, we have the one from January ninth. I'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Okay, Mark made that motion. I do have a change for that as well. Under the administrative report, it had Ed Connors explained the Act one twenty seven breakout. The second bullet point, the last sentence, doesn't quite make sense. It says, "Our tax rate will be the same if the FY twenty budget is," and then it says, "up one percent, under ten percent." It actually should read, "FY twenty five budget is increased up to the ten percent limit." You got that, Becky?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Then we have the budget, I mean, the draft minutes for the special budget meeting on January sixteenth. I'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Okay, Mark made that motion. I don't have any changes for that one. Send me changes. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's also unanimous. All right, we got that housekeeping taken care of. So we're all set with our meeting. All caught up with our minutes. Next, we have public participation. Is there any public participation?
No.
No? Okay. There won't be a student presentation of learning today. So next, we have the administrative report, which is budget. It's just budget.
Just budget.
Oh.
That one's fine. All right. There we go. All right, so Weathersfield School Annual Town Meeting, March second, twenty twenty four.
So we're, we're gonna go through what, what would happen if, if H eighty five, eight fifty doesn't go through?
This is actually our budget as it was presented before.
Yes.
So, and then whatever changes we need to make, changes. So this is as accurate as it can be at this moment. Okay, first article. To approve the reports of the school district officers for the period from July first, twenty twenty two, to June three, twenty twenty three. Article two, to elect the Weathersfield School District Officers for the ensuing term. Article three, devote that the Weathersfield School District is authorized to borrow money from the Capital Reserve Fund or a commercial lender in anticipation of taxes to meet the requirements of the school district for the ensuing year and to authorize the execution and delivery of notes or orders to the Weathersfield School District by Australian ballot. Article four, shall the voters of the Weathersfield School District authorize the school board to apply three hundred and forty nine thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars of the FY twenty three surplus to the Capital Reserve Fund by Australian ballot? And then article five, shall the voters of the Weathersfield School District approve the transfer of two hundred thousand dollars from the FY twenty three fund balance to a property tax reduction reserve fund to be applied as a revenue should increased expenses or reduced revenues cause an increase to the tax rate in future years? By Australian ballot? It's a lot to say.
That's a big mouthful, yeah.
It is. And so you guys might notice up there next to articles, it does say page. So once we get the page numbers from the town report, we'll put, I'll actually drop the numbers in there.
Oh, okay, so people at home can follow along?
It makes it, we found that to make it easier last year. So that's why that's in there, it wasn't that I missed anything. Article six, shall the voters of the Weathersfield School District approve the school board to expend eight million, seven hundred and seventy nine thousand, six hundred, six hundred and eighty dollars, which is the amount that the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? By Australian ballot? And article seven, to transact any other business which may properly come before the meeting. All right, any questions on the articles? Yes.
I think in the past, articles one, two, or three, or whatever that you said by Australian ballot, particularly with no money attached to them, have been voted as floor articles at one point. And on article four, is there any money in the Capital Reserve account now? You're asking, I think the public really should know that. So you're asking for an addition?
Yeah.
I don't know whether you present that or whatever. So is that a brand new account or is there money in it?
No, there already is an account. It has about two hundred, two hundred and twenty eight thousand. At our last meeting, we went over some projects that will be coming up in the next couple of years, such as, I believe there was the resurfacing of the parking lot and some other ideas.
You'll take, you'll take that up on Saturday? Some type of discussion of that?
Yeah, I, this is probably moot at this point, because that's probably not gonna happen anymore. That money.
Well, I mean, I, I learned about that for the first time, just seeing article four.
Yeah, yeah. What, what you're seeing today is, is what we voted on before the legislature decided to make these changes with H eight fifty.
Yeah, but I'm not there yet. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, you're asking the voters to, that's either gonna be a yes or no question on article four.
Okay.
And, and, and the question as a voter that just went into my mind was, okay, how much was, I think we should present that in the article, March second.
Okay, yeah.
For us to discuss. This is the only uniform side of two words, article. The reasons why we'd be helping for voters.
Yeah, all, all of these articles will be explained, well, I mean, not, not the simple ones, but the ones, any ones that involve money will be much further explained during the meeting. By, and they, and also people can ask questions if they have questions at that time.
And then those are taken right from the warning? That's why it's at Australian ballot, because that's what it said on the warning.
Yeah, you can't change that in law.
Yeah, so that's why it's, so it's exactly like it is, so took it verbatim.
No, I was just getting to the reason. So you picked that out of the three hundred and something thousand. And I think it's important to know that you have two hundred and something thousand already in there. So the total and after a yes vote would be five hundred and something thousand in a reserve account or capital group, right?
Exactly.
All right, any other questions?
One online.
Okay.
No, he put his hand up.
Okay.
No, he put it back up.
Okay. Who is it?
Brandon.
It's Brandon.
Hey, Brandon, go ahead.
Hey, can you go back to, I think it was article five or six. Could you pull that back up?
Is that the one for the two hundred thousand dollars for future property tax reduction?
Yeah, and it says reserve fund. Is that reserve fund already established?
No, that, that's a new fund that would be established.
There has been one in the past.
There has been one in the past, but it's, you know, it was, it now is no longer, it's depleted, but we were going to add this back into it or open a new one. I don't know how it would work exactly.
Dave, do you know if there's a different process for actually establishing a reserve account? Or will this article, by voting to transfer the money in there, create, create the reserve fund?
I guess I, I guess I defer to the language in that article. I don't know if it says it all in one, does it wrap it all up in one sentence? Where they, they've allocated the dollar amount and the intent, which would be to, 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 to put that into the reserve account. So, so if it does, then yes would be yes and no would be no.
This is again, one of the articles that if H eight fifty passes, we would be most likely getting rid of.
I don't disagree with the article. I was just wondering if it will establish what you're trying to do. If the reserve fund doesn't exist, will article five create the reserve fund?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, I can't see what's in that as well.
Does it say, I don't have my glasses on.
It says opt two, two hundred thousand.
What does it say?
It was two hundred thousand was the amount we were gonna put in.
So that is the.
That was the amount we were going to put in there, yeah.
Yep. See, well, I know what we do at the town is we'll say, so let's say that you didn't have anyone a thousand. You, the voters would authorize you to establish a reserve account, and you may have a circumstance where you can put in a hundred and ninety nine. There's a little freedom there.
Oh.
This, this one says, you know, exactly the amount and exactly the account.
So you're recommending that if we were to do this in the future, we would say opt two instead of saying exactly?
Yes.
And, and, and Brandon, would you, would you rather see it say, uh, fund balance to a new property tax reduction reserve fund? Like, just out of the word new, would that suffice?
I would actually, I think consulting with Steve.
What? These went through our legal counsel.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
We, we can't hear you, but these did go through our legal counsel, so we have.
Okay.
We do have legal counsel on us.
And counsel did say it would create a new reserve fund in Weathersfield?
The lawyer didn't say, did not say that, Brandon. He approved the articles as written. Ed is on, Ed might be able to speak to it. I know, I know there was a fund in the past. I don't know if that just goes to zero and we have to open a new one? Or if we can add to that line? Ed, do you know the answer to that?
And Christine, I just, you know, usually when I look at what a reserve, like how a reserve fund was created, I go to the town meeting, meeting article that created it, and it's just different than this article.
Yeah, yeah, we took this article from the last time it was done. The language right from that warning. But if it needs to be written differently, you know, please, yeah, share your, share your feedback so we can get it right.
Yeah, they come in and defer it to Steve Hyer. I'll ask him tomorrow.
Okay, and, and you'll get back to us?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. John has his hand up. Okay, John? John Arison?
Yeah, he's trying to unmute, it looks like. No, he put his hand down. I think he's trying to figure out how to unmute.
Okay. John, you can type into the chat too if you.
Let me see if it's open, actually. Okay, I think he's saying go on for now.
Okay. All right, any other questions or, Brian, move on? Okay.
Are you on the tab there?
Yeah. There we go. There, it showed up, okay. All right, so community. It's from one of our community dinners, luncheons. So how we meet student and family needs. So obviously, special education for kids who qualify through the IEP, the Individual Education Plan. We also have support for high-risk kids who are not served through IEPs. So we have We Are Hope, which is a coaching model for students that we have a coach here that helps out some of the students that need it. We do offer advanced eighth grade math. Students may access high school algebra, so they do that through Windsor, and they go there in the morning, and that's their math class for the year. Expanded food program designed to serve better food to more kids. Our food here is pretty amazing. If you have the opportunity, we do, we are having lunch with the loved one this week. Hopefully you signed up and you can come on by. I know some people here have already done it, and it is a great opportunity to get lunch with your students, but also kids eat breakfast and lunch for free. We have Hicks Nichols Grants, PTO Funding, Rise Amplify Grant and other grants, bring all kinds of extras to the school at no cost to taxpayers, which is amazing. Four Winds, which we have through our budget, and it's a nature-based curriculum. We have parent volunteers that come out and run the Four Winds Program. It gives kids those opportunities to have some hands-on learning, and usually it's outside. PAWS, which is not a school-funded program, but is amazing. We've got a brand-new PAWS director this year, who has just really expanded the program and made it more accessible for many families, and they share the facility here in our AP room. We have high attendance by students. Our average attendance is about ninety-three to ninety-four percent on average. And then we do theme-based activities after school hours for families and volunteer time. So lots and lots of stuff going on at the school. Opportunities for student and family engagement. We did our Welcome Back kickoff again, which we do our back-to-school night before school starts. We find that it takes away a lot of the anxiety for both students and teachers and families by having that. We do have a Makerspace. We have an ever-growing sports program. Our sports program keeps getting bigger and bigger each year. We just completed our four weeks of winter activities, which was amazing for the students to be able to have that, because we're raising Vermonters and being able to have them be outside. Or if they don't want to do an outside activity, they can also do some of the inside things. Our wonderful PTO does a paw drop every year, and I know they've already been planning for this upcoming fall again, and it's always a highly great turnout for that. We just have our family dance on Saturday from three to five o'clock. That's also a PTO activity. And so our middle-level students get dances on a regular basis, including, they're doing an S U Y dance this year. But our PTO last year wanted to make sure that our little ones, our elementary school kids, got that opportunity as well. So we did a K-five dance, and they did it again, and we had a large participation. It was so big on Saturday when I walked in there, I was a little overwhelmed with that many people and the dancing that was going on that I stayed for a little bit, but I hung out in my office a little bit, I'll admit that. Our community Thanksgiving dinner is always well-attended by our community. Family, there's a line out the door for it. It's really just a great opportunity. We're planning a STEAM night in May between our teacher, Mrs. Smith, who runs our Makerspace, and also we're getting our new arts teacher involved in that, because what a difference the A makes in STEAM. And so she's gonna be helping out a little bit more with that. We completed our high school fair in January, where we had students that are eighth graders and below that too, where they can have an opportunity to come and check out some of the different high schools, since we are a high school choice district. And then we've had students that have been shadowing the different high schools around and making those selections for where they're going. We do monthly pride assemblies where our students get recognized for being, for having perseverance, respect, integrity, determination, and empathy. And so we invite families to those so that we can recognize the students. Last year, we did an amazing production of The Little Mermaid Junior, and we're already in, working on Beauty and the Beast Junior. And so we're able to get that done, and we have lots of our families that participate and are, do the costumes and everything, and they just do a fantastic job. It was a really great opportunity for kids last year. And last year, we had a lot of students that had to do double and triple parts, and this year, we don't have that many of those. There's a lot of, a lot more kids that are involved because they saw how amazing it was last year. Our student council is part of our leadership class, and so we have four student council officers that help out with our leadership class as well, and they make decisions and help out with the school. Including this week, they are doing a activity, which it is Random Acts of Kindness Week. So they're involved in that. They get here before school, some of them, to help put up signs and do different things and decorate. So it's just one of the many things that our leadership classes do, including planning the SU dance as well. We just did our spelling bee today, and so we have three students that are going on to the next level for spelling bee. Our math team that is led by Mrs. Stillson and Ms. Kusurk helps out as well, is constantly doing math meets. They have one more coming up, and they've been doing really well, and it's nice to see. We have an all-girl math team this year, which is pretty awesome. The girl power for mathematics, which we like. And then our students do Christmas cards and caroling at the Ascotney House. So just some of the school-wide activities that we've been able to do this year. Funding sources. So we have lots of different funding sources. We have local taxes, State of Vermont Educational Fund, obviously federal government grants, private grants, like we mentioned before, Hicks Nichols, Walmart, Burn Foundation, Rise Amplify. Our PTO gives a lot back. We get generous donations from teachers, staff, parents, community, and organizations. And then we also have tons and tons of volunteers. We just got a very large amount of furniture from Red River, which we appreciate. So all of our teachers got new chairs, or just like the one over there. So they're gently-used chairs, but they are really expensive, and we could not have afforded them as a school. But Red River donated those to us, so it made it really nice for us. We appreciate all of the generous donations that we get from our community. All right, any questions on community?
Dave has a question.
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
I, I just have a comment. So I was in the town office today, and I was talking also with Steve Hyer, the treasurer, who's also part of the team that handles the public funds. I would generally check to see, and I didn't get into it with him, about what the terms were of Hicks Nichols. I, I'm very familiar with that, but I'm, but I'm talking about the interest bearing. So I don't know, they deposited into certificates, I know, and since that has changed dramatically, it might be really good for you guys to check on that, because, you know, it's a long way from point five percent interest right now. It's more like close to five, and not for annually. That, that's a big deal. So, but I don't know the terms of what he's done to secure what banks those are in. You know, so I don't know the length of where he's at right now. But I know when he re-ups, for instance, I know that's an interest-bearing account. You guys can spend the interest. But what I'm trying to say is, you know, it might be, you know, like ten thousand, but it might grow to like fifty thousand. So it's worth checking.
Thank you, I noted that. Appreciate it, Dave. All right, our goals. Part of our strategic plan, so our three main goals in our strategic, in our strategic plan, are student success and engagement, information and communication, and culture and student wellness. So one of the things that we do, Leader and Me, we're in our core three, part of Leader and Me. Our classrooms continue to have mission statements. They set up their wigs that they change on a regular basis, which are wildly important goals. We have student-led presentations, Panther Pride assemblies that go back into that, and students help out with that. And then, of course, like I mentioned before, our leadership class. And one of the things that we're doing for our spring conferences is they're gonna be student-led conferences. So the students have portfolios, and they're going to lead their learning and tell their families what they've learned, of course, with the teacher being the guide on the side. Information and communication. So we work hard at building the partnership between school and home. We do that with our Weathersfield Weekly Newsletter that we've adjusted to make it easier for families to read, classroom newsletters, social media, and our website. And we've also been thrilled to offer those in-person community dinners that I've mentioned a couple of times already. So more opportunities for families to be here. Not really sure what that sounds. So MTSS and winter activities. So we use a systematic approach to make sure that all students have an equitable and successful education. We have done this, this year by working with teachers on impacting standards while working on high-impact teaching strategies. We meet as teams consistently to look at data and adjust instructions needed, so it's all part of the MTSS process. And then we were able to continue winter activities, like I mentioned. Students had a multitude of activities that they, oops, see, I gotta fix that right there. Two words are combined. That they could choose to do either outdoors or indoors, and students had lots of voice and choice on that. Just make a note. All right. Any questions on our goals? All right, supervisor union assessments. So the following expenses fall within the assessments we give to the SUs. So special education, food services, transportation, administration and operations, early childhood program, maintenance, and curriculum. So that's part of, all part of what we get from our, who are we? What we get from our unions, supervisor union assessments. All right. FY twenty five overview of the budget. Project enrollment and K twelve student enrollment. So our projected enrollment, right now, we, we have twenty-five as a placeholder for kindergarten. That number goes up and down depending on, so twenty-five is a good ballpark figure. We have a really small kindergarten class this year, so we have twenty students that are moving on to first grade, twenty-six, thirty-three, thirty, thirty, twenty-seven, thirty, and then seventeen will be eighth graders next year. We had a really large class of thirty-six this year, and then our seventh-grade class is pretty small, it's seventeen. So we have two hundred and thirty-eight total students right now, and that number does vary. Usually, we add more students as the year progresses, so that's a very conservative number to figure for this year. And then K twelve-wise, you can see how our numbers have changed over the last four or five years from two thirty-four, two thirty-eight, with two seventeen mixed in there. And then our numbers increase as far as with high school, and so we're projected to have three hundred and forty-three students K through twelve next year. High school costs. So projected high school tuition. So FY 2023, our actual cost was one million, nine hundred and eleven, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. In FY '24, the projected high school tuition was two million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. And then for FY 2025, two million, three hundred and seventy-one, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So high school, cost of high school goes up a little bit. Part of that is that we have eight more students this year in high school than we had going in. We have eight more going in than we had out, I think is what the number worked out to be.
And the costs have gone up.
And the costs have gone up too. So sometimes we have this bubble year. Next year, obviously, we only have seventeen going into high school. So there'll be some, some changes next year. Okay, our budget goals for FY '25, always to maintain a staffing plan and program of studies which support our whole, the whole child intellectually, socially, emotionally, and physically. And then to bring forth a responsible budget while meeting the educational quality standards that we have here at Weathersfield. All right. Okay, that might be a little hard for everybody to see, so if you, I could probably make it bigger.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna put bigger on that one. But that gives an overview of the information as far as what wages increase, benefits, benefits have gone up, and I'll get into that slide in a minute. Contract and services, those are all the breakdowns. I'll make that one, proposed budget bigger. Okay, and then budget increase drivers, these are some of the things that helped make our budget bigger. So I can probably make this bigger as well. Okay, bigger budget slide. So that we had a sixteen point four percent healthcare increase, staff negotiated salary increases, high school tuition went up, one point oh full-time health teacher, we have a one point oh full-time equivalent world language teacher, we added a full-time art teacher that we didn't have before, that was a sixty percent position before. And then we have two full-time equivalent ESAR-funded teaching positions that will go back into the general budget. We have the increase in the SU share of the assessments, do the increase in enrollment numbers. And then this was because of the five percent preCLA cap, Weathersfield Board would have to cut roughly one point, one, two, five million to begin to have reduction in the FY '25 tax rate, which would have a detrimental effect on our school.
Yeah. And that's if Act 127 states as is, which currently the House is taking up a resolution H-850, which will totally change all of this.
Yeah.
It's anticipated.
And it's anticipated that it will pass. The governor is in favor of it, so we'll talk about that when Brian is done.
All right, SU assessments. There's a comparison of what our SU assessments are from FY '24 to FY '25. I think that's big enough.
Yeah. Readable.
And then increase in our tax rate. So our current tax rate is one point six six four six. New tax rate was projected to be one point nine six oh six, which is an increase of point two nine six or seventeen point seven nine percent from last year. And then those are the increase in what the value of your taxes would increase as a home, as a property owner here in Weathersfield, based on your home value.
Mr. Fuller. Was the, so the state announces the homestead, that's homestead, right?
Yeah.
You guys don't have anything to do with setting the tax rate?
No, no.
The state gives the information and you get it back. Do you know if there's a year delay on that information that's gathered or is that? I think it has to be, right? Because the listers every year assemble the grand list by like name first. So we're, so it's already a little bit behind the information that's used to gather whatever the valuations are.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking that, that this is.
Yeah, I think the homestead rate is a year behind and income, and the income census, income sensitivity is two years behind, so.
And they have, in order to gather all this kind of information to establish this. I think so. The reason I ask that because we, at the town, we do a little bit different. The state doesn't, the state does not set the tax rate. We set the tax rate every year in June after the budgets. Because we got the most current information on the grand list. So one, it's, for the last two years in a row, I don't know if you've heard me say this, but it's, it's a little unnerving. Despite all of what the uproar is about values of homes and if a couple of new homes are built in Weathersfield or more, whatever the land use permits are, there is a formula that a really large entity in town uses, it's a utility, and they use that, according to the state law, to factor in a little depreciation. So that has lowered the grand list despite anybody putting a deck on or adding to their land use things. This will be the third year in a row that's happened. As a result of that, the rates are a little higher. So when I talk to Mike Todd, and I don't know if I dropped this on Brandon yet today, but we're gonna make sure that we funnel that information that the utility is using to the PUC, which sets the electric rates. So you can't have it both ways. You'll have your, your assessment dramatically lowered and then the rest of us have to make up the difference through the tax rate, through the homestead. That's what's happened. And then they filed for a rate increase. Hold the call. And I'm talking a lot of money. I'm talking like more than, I don't even know, it's in the millions, random his dominance. He's got all the chart on it. So that's just one. And I don't know where this, does this rate then implicate something else you're gonna talk about with the legislature?
Yes, and, well, yes.
Yes, because, because this, this rate involves the five percent to happen, like the legislature is, well, we can talk about it later, but it's, they're, they're planning on changing it. The cap is gonna go away and so everything's gonna get different.
But it's always an estimate, Dave, because they're gonna set the yield after all the budgets have passed, which impacts.
So they're gonna, I, I don't know, but typically, we, just so you guys keep all this in mind, I think I emailed you this, Anne Marie, I don't know if you shared with everybody, but typically, as we move along, the, the tax rates are set finality, like somewhere in June. So the first quarterly tax payment is due somewhere around August, ten percent.
Yeah.
But you guys are, this is not gonna hurt you because the financial year ends on June thirtieth of any year. The new one begins on July first, for school and the town. So I don't know what's gonna happen on our tax bills. We're just gonna get to the end of what the tax bill is gonna say.
All right, any questions on, I have those two corrections to fix on fiscal year '25? Okay. All right. And then any general questions? And I was thinking on this slide, but you're probably gonna say no, it'd be really nice to have a picture of you guys, because I've printed out the rest of my slides. Just thought I'd ask, okay? The laughter says no right there, but just thought it'd be, you know, a nice touch. But, all right.
Think about it.
We'll think about it. Maybe we could all send you in pictures. I mean, I don't want one taken right tonight, but maybe we could all send you pictures.
All right, that's, that's fair. You guys are even considering it, I appreciate that, so. All right, and so that's, that's it for my part. I can breathe now. Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing then.
And your meeting's at ten AM, right? Saturday, March 10th, ten AM.
Yep.
As of, as of right now, but that might change.
Well, when I, well, when I went, I think, I think it has to be on a, on a warning.
That's part, that's part of the, that's part of what the legislature is working on, that we will be able to actually rescind all of our articles, set a new date, have a totally new vote.
But the, but the ballots are being printed right now, just so you.
Yeah, I know, that they have, they have, I have papers that.
People elected persons that are running.
Yeah.
So some of this is gonna stay.
It could. Well, it could, or it, either we can decide to have it stay or we can decide to take, to have those crossed off and not be tabulated and be tabulated at a later date. Depends what we decide. And well, if this passes, it depends what we decide.
Well, then we're, I mean, we're still scheduled to hold the town meeting.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I, I'd be working with the town clerk because the other one.
I definitely, as soon as I have a more firm grasp of what's actually gonna happen, I will definitely be in touch with Floanne.
All right.
So you're not gonna?
No.
To present today. Okay. All right, so what we were just talking about is what's going on in the legislature, which they've apologized profusely. They understand what this, what kind of tumult this is gonna cause amongst the state school boards. Unfortunately, the way the five percent cap ended up working out, it sent the yield into kind of a downward death spiral. And they had, they need to make a change. They realized this actually back in November, but because we have a part-time legislature, they couldn't do any, start working on this until the beginning of January. So they've come up with H-850, which I don't know if every, I emailed everybody a copy of that, I don't know if everybody has it and found. It's changed slightly. Today, it changed a little bit more, just very slightly from what I sent you. Mostly, it just sort of, I think the two big changes from the one that I sent you were that we can rescind all the articles. The, originally, it was just budget articles. Now it's all the school board articles we can rescind and set a new date for. And we also, there was, I forget, there was also some kind of change to, they're providing funds to do this also, Dave, so you can let Floanne know that she'll be getting some money to do all of it.
After the election.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Save your receipts. So save your receipts, yeah, if, if that's what we've pledged to. But, um, yeah. So H-850 takes away the five percent cap. If we take away the five percent cap and leave our budget as it is, our tax rate would be two point zero three seven eight. So that's an increase of twenty-two point four two percent from last year.
With the cap, it was seventeen point seven nine.
Yes.
So it's a, it's a little bit more.
Yes, so it's, it's significantly. So I don't, I don't think that, I, I didn't think seventeen percent was probably not gonna fly with a lot of voters. I definitely don't think twenty-two point four two percent.
And that's a tax discount.
Yes, we did get, so, well, the things that are, the things in H-50, so instead of the five percent cap, they're going to give us, we're, we're one of the districts, it turns out. It seemed like we were getting a lot more pupils, but actually, they're giving a lot more pupils to everybody. So comparatively, we're on the losing end of the getting pupils scale and we are losing five percent tax capacity in Weathersfield. So to help us to moderate that and to work it into our budgets, each district that's on the losing end, that's losing tax capacity, is being given a certain amount of cents off their tax rate. And it's equal to the amount of percent that you're losing. So then, since we're losing five percent tax rate, we will get five cents taken off of our tax rate. And then that's gonna be over the next five years. We'll get five percent this year, four percent FY '26, three percent FY '27, two percent, and then one percent, and then no percent. So hopefully, we'll have worked it into our budget at the end of that time.
And the scenario is all of H-50 passes tomorrow?
This is if, well, if, it's, it's set to go to the House tomorrow. The House, if they pass it, then it goes to the Senate. Then they need to pass it and then the governor needs to sign it. As far as what I've heard, it, it's looking like it is gonna pass because if it doesn't, I mean, it's just, it's not a good situation with the yield if this doesn't pass.
Okay.
John Arison has his hand up.
First of all, your chair has done an excellent job of her presentation. She's probably learned more about the bills in the legislature than she probably ever wanted to know. But anyway, what, basically, what she said is, is a hundred percent accurate. The bill technically is still in committee. First reading is coming up and then they could advance it to second reading right then and there. I don't think they will. And then, of course, it goes over to the Senate. The Senate has a propensity to actually change, throw their two cents in and change things. But I think the only cho, choice that you folks have right now is to assume that act, that H-50 will go through basically as written, maybe with some minor changes. The thing that's gonna be really uncomfortable is that the last date that they're giving to actually have your town vote on your budget is April fifteenth. And that has to be worn a month, or thirty days early. So you only get a month to figure out what to do and how to do it. Fortunately, I think the last meeting I attended with you folks, you, you did not pad your budget with that money that looked like it was free, if you will. In other words, didn't affect your tax rate. A lot of schools did not do the prudence that you folks did and did indeed throw that extra money into their budgets to fix roofs or whatever they planned on doing, I have no idea. But anyway, the, the goal, hopefully, is that some of these schools will back up. The total overall spending for the state will go down, which should help all the schools Like I said, when it goes to the Senate, there, I don't think they will make any wholesale changes. I just don't see that happening. This bill's gotta go through. You can't, the, the five percent was, was basically supposed to accomplish what the percentage decreases that Anne Marie just outlined. And, and nobody anticipated the results that took place with, with the extra spending, COVID, and everything else, because that was actually passed in the '22 session. Anything else I can help with, let me know.
John, do you know if the yield changed today?
I haven't seen the yield number, period, except for the one in December that was released. All I can say is that, that state revenues are, are pretty close to projections. And that's where a lot of that money comes from, sales tax. Another, the, I guess the, the nuts and bolts of it is that don't anticipate wonderful numbers or, or improve, significantly improved numbers from the yield.
One thing that they did, Emily Cornhouse, or at the Ways and Means Committee was talking about was that, right now, it isn't figured in that districts will cut their budgets, but they are assuming that we will. So if that does take place, that will help with the yield. So the yield should improve slightly, because it does seem to me, at least other school board chairs that I've been talking to are also planning to cut their budgets. So I think it's pretty safe to assume that people will be cutting their budgets due to this change.
And, and just so everybody knows, that's not my committee, I'm an Institutions and Corrections, and we spent the day talking about inmates, so.
We appreciate you keeping an eye on this for us.
I try to follow the Ways and Means Committee, because there's a couple other bills that, that will affect the town that I've been communicating with Brandon about.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you very much, John. We appreciate you looking out for us. Okay, um, so, so in front of you, you all have a list of proposed amounts that we could cut the budget and what our tax rate would end up being if we do that. So let me see, it's, it's a little confusing because, so you have with surplus, if we just take all the surplus money, that's the, those two other funds, the two hundred thousand dollar fund and the three hundred and some going into the capital reserves, and instead put that towards the budget, our tax rate would go, would become fourteen, would become one point nine zero five eight, and that's a four. And that's, uh, 14 and a half percent interest. I mean, uh, yeah.
Increase.
Increase. If, like I said, if we leave it as is, it's 2.0378. And then you have the line where it says 500,000. Now that's, that's not including the surplus. So, um, that's why it's higher. You know what I mean? I actually had a different one where it said. Yeah.
Fix that for us.
I didn't, uh, print that. So, um, if we.
Yeah.
If we cut a million.
This is it.
Oh, this, oh, okay. Yeah, this one is the one that makes more sense. Although, we have to discuss if we want to put the whole surplus towards, like, and this, and this is all, everything that we're discussing now is if H-850 passes. If H-50 doesn't pass, then we're not doing, then we can't do anything. We have to go ahead with the budget that we have. There was mention of using Act 1, which is a COVID act, to postpone our vote. But that would not come with any money from the state for, uh, you know, for reprinting ballots and so forth. So I think if, if H-50 doesn't pass, I think we would want to just, um, just, just leave it as is and see what happens and probably, you know, having, uh, not pass and. And come back and work on it some more in the spring. But, um, if H-50, if H-850 does pass, um, these are our options. We could use the whole surplus, we could use none of the surplus, or we could use part of the surplus, and combine that with cuts. I, personally, I don't recommend using the whole surplus. I kind of feel like that's a little bit of what got us into this mess in the first place. Is that the governor used the, used the sur, used a lot of the surplus from last year's ed fund and artificially bought down tax rates to 1.6366.
Two years.
Actually, two years in a row, yeah. So, um, if you go back to, let me see, what year was it? If you go back to F, to FY22, we were actually at 1.95. Which, um, it, you know, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be as much of a difference now if there hadn't been those buy-down years of FY23 and FY24. So I don't, I don't, I don't like to use this much mon, use all that money and use that much money to buy down this year's budget because we're just gonna end up paying for it next year. And that we're gonna, our budget's gonna be too high next year. And we're gonna have to, it's, I think it's better to spread out the cuts. But I just, I also would like the voters to know that, you know, comparing last year's 1.66 to whatever we come up with this year is a little bit unfair, because last year there was all kinds of money being thrown at us and at the budget that is no longer available. So, um, if we, if we were to use the whole surplus, we would need to also cut $250,000 in order to get a tax rate increase of 10.89, which is a tax rate of 1.8458. I think that's reasonable. I, I mean, I think that amount is reasonable in this year, in this year. I don't know that I want to use all of the surplus and only cut 250,000. I think it's better to maybe use about half the surplus and cut 50,000, 500,000 from the budget.
Can we, yeah, I, I think Brian's gonna present to us.
He's gonna present to us some possible cuts.
Yeah, so let's hear those first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, Brandon has his hand raised. Brandon, do you have something to say before Brian gives the possible tax cuts?
Hi, just real quick, are the other school boards in our supervisory union also having these conversations?
Yes, yes. Mount Scotty Board met last night, and they decided to resend their budget. And, um, resend their informational meeting date and, um, one other thing they rescinded, so.
So they decided to go ahead with Act 1?
They did.
And do that?
So they will be having a special election, and, um, they're gonna wait roughly two weeks just to see how things are playing out i, in the legislature before they start talking about their budget. And, uh, Heartland has a special meeting this Thursday to discuss the very same topic. And I don't, obviously, I don't know what they're gonna do yet, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all having the same conversation.
And if we, I'm sorry. Is the Supervisory Union Board getting together to revisit the SU budget, or is that one, I mean, approved?
But so, uh, I am planning on, at the next SU budget meeting, I mean, at the SU meeting, bringing up the budget. I have spoken with the other board chairs, and they agree that, um, if we all have to make large cuts to our local budgets, that we would like to see if the SU has some cuts that they could, um, you know, offer as well, just to sort of, you know, we're all in it together. So, um, so I've asked Christine to, you know, and to work on coming up with some cuts that they could possibly make. That has not, now that would have to pass the whole board. I don't, you know, I don't know if, you know, enough members are gonna wanna do that, but that, I am planning to do that at the next SU meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Emily.
And that, that's also why I'm planning to ask, that's why I spoke with you earlier, and I'm planning to ask you to look over the SU budget.
Yeah. Sorry. What's the, what's the increase from the SU and what's the increase from our local budget? What's, where are the two? There's a total increase that includes the SU budget increase and then our local school budget increase, right?
Are you asking, um, the Weathersfield share of the SU budget, Brandon?
Yeah, how much did that increase?
It increased roughly 500,000 this year.
Yeah, okay.
And that was, um, the SU budget was up, I think special ed was up about 5.6, and everything else was up about 3.2, if I, if I remember correctly. And so you, you already know Weathersfield share went up because the enrollment in Weathersfield went up and also decreased in another district, so it's kind of like a double, double whammy for Weathersfield this, this year.
So our, our local budget was around 700,000, and then the SU budget increase was around 500,000. Is that?
So the local budget increase over last year, um, I can look. I think it was over a million, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, our difference is 1.29, almost 1.3 million.
1.1, almost 1.3 million.
But I think he's asking, so 500,000 of that is the, yeah, so is, is the SU, and 700,000 of that is the local. Yeah, so you, you are correct with your numbers, Brandon.
And, and just to, you probably already know this, but any cut to the SU budget, so if the SU budget is cut by 100,000, Weathersfield sees roughly 25,000 of that cut in their budget. If it's divvied out.
Yeah.
What, what's the percentages of the SU budget per?
Per district? Weathersfield's at about 25%.
A little over 25, yeah, I think we're 26.
I think, um, if my memory serves correctly, Heartland's at 30 something, and Mount Scotty's at 43, I would say. Do you have that? I can look it up and get you exact numbers if you.
Yeah, but it's all, it's all based on our, um, the pupil count, this new, um, long-term weighted average pupil count.
Yep, except for.
Except for, except for food, food service, which is, uh, based on students in the building.
Yeah.
And that was something that Weathersfield and Heartland fought hard for because our, our high school students don't benefit from that at all. Okay, um, so. So we were, so you were gonna go over what?
Yeah, so I did develop a couple different scenarios, which are possible. Budget cuts. So in those budget cuts, I offset it with the, the 549, that was a matter of $19, so that makes up about half of the budget cuts in both of them. So the first thing I went, I went ahead and cut our summer steam program, which is a $24,493. World ling, world language teacher, $95,075. Health education, $86,691. We are home, $30,000. Gym floor, $40,000.
Say it again, what was it?
Gym floor.
Gym floor. Oh, gym floor.
Yeah, gym floor.
Gym floor. Not gym floor. Who's that?
Who's that one guy?
I was like, I don't know.
Kindergarten furniture, $30,000. Regular education para support, $155,034. And then I have the percent, the surplus to offset the budget. So that scenario one is a total of $1,011,212.
With the surplus.
With the surplus, yeah.
With the surplus. And then the second one is the same cuts with the addition of the two teachers that were funding through Ester funds. That we were funding through Ester funds, we're putting back into the general budget. So those total 170,626. 170,626. And so that's a total of $1,181,838. So all of those.
What, what do the, um, cutting the Ester-funded teachers, what do those do to our classroom numbers?
So what we do is we have two teachers that are leaving. So we would, um, just absorb those two teachers in the matrix.
Okay.
And so I happen to have those as well. So if you want to pass those out, those are the kind of matrices that I, that we created and have as all. Can I explain it to you here, if you want me to?
Sure.
So there's, there's three different matrix, matrices there. I'm gonna look over your shoulder. I apologize. I should have made more copies of that. So this first matrix is, um, getting, keeping two kindergarten classes at 10 apiece, one first grade classroom, so not replacing a first grade teacher. And then, um, combining, making two fifth grade classes so that we have one teacher that's teaching math, science, and another one's teaching ELA and social studies. And then just doing one sixth grade class, so it's a little bit larger class, it's that fifth grade class, it's been together forever. And then two seventh grade classes at 15 apiece, and then one eighth grade class at 17. And that projected number's a little bit lower than what we have now, because we're up to like 246 in projected. This one is leaving everybody as they are.
Oh, these are different.
Yeah, there's three different ones.
Oh, I see.
I did three different scenarios, so this is Matrix C. Let me do Matrix B first. Sorry.
All right, I thought they were all the same.
No, I did, I did three, we did three different ones, come up with it. So this one is, again, it's the same as, it's making a kindergarten, first grade combo. So we would combine kindergartners, we'd have a class of 14 kinders, a class of six kinders and five first graders, and then another class of 15 first graders. Our two second grade classes at 13 apiece. Hire a third grade teacher at 16. Keep the other third grade teacher, keep the two, um, fourth grade teachers at 15 apiece. And then do fifth grade 15 and 15, where we have math, science, and ELA and social studies. And then the numbers would be the same for middle level. And then the very last one, Matrix C, would be to keep it the way we have, sort of our dream, keep the two kindergarten classes the way they are. One initial first grade teacher, and then hire a second first grade teacher, and then hire a third grade teacher, but then everybody else is the same with the exception of science, where we left the fifth grade being the split between the 15 and 15. So it's almost the exact, yeah, almost the exact same as we have now. It's just we would only have four middle level teachers, and we'd add a fifth grade teacher, and so we're just having one. Would you mind?
Yeah, we should actually.
Yeah, we probably can't share this.
We can't.
Can we? It's okay to share these with the?
No.
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 Oh, yeah.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Yep.
And do you want copies of anything else?
Although, the one thing I have to say here is that, um, this is kind of that guy's job to decide which of these three scenarios he goes with. It's our job to decide how many teachers he has to work with. It's not our job to decide which scenario he goes with. So I'm not sure that we actually need to see copies of those.
No.
I mean, we need to see them, I mean, look at them, but I don't know that we need to have them. Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good, BJ.
The scenarios there that I gave, one of them does do, it, it cuts the two Ester-funded teachers by not replacing the first and the third grade teachers.
Yeah, so that was, so that was A.
I believe that was A, yeah.
A is the one where, so.
The most drastic cut.
That's the most drastic cuts. A didn't look bad to me. I mean, the only class that I'm not in love with is sixth grade, but that looks like that's the same no matter where we're going here.
Yeah, I mean, sixth grade, we can add, you know, back in there. I mean, we can, we can play around with the numbers a little bit. Those are just some things that I woke up in the middle of the night and thought of.
Yeah. That would also be from all the different scenarios, the line that, that pops out in my head, too. Perhaps there's a, perhaps we can lose those two Ester-funded positions and then possibly augment some assistance on that sixth grade line.
Yeah. And we can look at some different things that we could do with the sixth grade, I mean, if we would.
Have they, you said they've been, like, have they been together as one class?
They've been in class since third grade, since I've been here, they've been together. So I really would like, I mean, and they're right at that cusp, because the number goes back and forth.
And there's not, there's not a lot of problems in the class?
Yeah, they're starting to get a little, little stir crazy together. I'll be right on that one. Yeah, they, they, they've been together for, for a long time now, in the same room. So, um, I would love to be able to break those kids up a little bit, and so that's, that's, that was the one where I was losing sleep on. I mean, I'm losing sleep on all of them, of course.
Once they're in middle school, the middle school, middle level, they do have the opportunity to do some electives and stuff to get away from each other.
Right, so we could revamp our schedule a little bit and change some things around.
Spend some time with some other.
Yeah, we, I mean, there's some creative things that we can look at and see. But it would just, it's, we're gonna have to be creative with it, because it's not ideal, obviously, so.
I still think the first grade is an idea. I mean, that next step from kindergarten into first, which is more like second at this point. I just think that's still high, but.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's not ideal, but I don't think that 20 is.
So this is A.
I don't think that 20 is ridiculous, though, for a classroom.
What do the experts think?
Yeah. It's always better to keep them lowest in the youngest grades, because they need the most support.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Right.
So if you can build a really strong foundation in those early years, you're gonna be better off, um, as they progress. So, I mean, 20 is the max recommended in the education quality standards for K-2. Less, I think it says less than 20. I can, I can check on that for you. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, um, I would recommend you have a full-time support person in there. You have 20 first graders learning to read and all the other things that, um, they need to learn in, in school these days in that, at that grade level.
Yeah.
It's hard to differentiate. You have a lot of different, you know, levels in a classroom. And if you're a teacher of one, especially when kids are really learning to read, you're gonna wanna group them accordingly so that you can give them the, you know, small group support that they need, and that's. It's not, um, it's not an absolutely can't be done, but it's really challenging. So.
And it depends on the pupils that are in the classroom, so, yeah.
And the needs. So.
And, um, and as far as either having two full-time teachers or one full-time teacher and.
A support staff.
A support staff, what's the difference in cost between those two?
It's probably, um, 35 to 40,000 dollars, I would say, with, with full packages, benefits and all of that. So that's the difference. I will say that, you know, that there was a study done and the recommendation. The recommendation is you always want, you know, the most highly qualified teacher, individuals with your, with your students. So when you're, so that's.
I'm going to BJ.
Certified teacher and a support staff.
It's not really the same thing.
It's not really the same thing, yeah.
That's a nice way, but. I'm just making more, it's not the same thing.
So just to confirm, Brian, this, these matrices are excluding the Ester-funded people you've absorbed them in?
No, just A.
Just A.
Oh, just A, okay.
The other two, keep the Ester-funded.
Okay.
Positions, but shuffle them into where they need to.
What does C do?
C, I think it's just a. C, I think it's just a different way to do it. Yeah, C leaves the two Ester funded teachers, so it's, it's the amount of staff we currently have. B gets rid of one.
Okay, so B's getting rid of one.
So C is the same as current.
Now, I'm confused about, how do you do kindergarten and first grade at the same time?
Yeah, I was. Like, so.
I mean, I've heard it's been done in the past.
What do you say, that was my first teaching assignment. Um, so you actually have the right teacher in there, um, and you just, you differentiate the instruction based on the needs of the kids. And so you really have to, anytime you do a combo class, as long as the combo class is set up prior to it, and you have those kids that are learning to be able to, I always look for some independent learners in those classes. Students that can really work, you know, on their own and be able to do things, um, and build a class from there. Is it tough to do? Absolutely. But with the right teacher in there, it, it can happen, so, um.
You, you also have to consider that there are separate curriculums for kindergarten and first grade, so as a teacher, figuring out how to deliver, um.
Yeah.
Two grade levels.
Two grade levels, and it's a balancing act.
I did it.
And that teacher will work really hard, it is, and it's absolutely hard, but it, it can be done. Um, and it can be really beneficial to students in the long run, too, it really can be. It's just you have to pick the right kiddos in there, and it's tough with kindergarten and first grade.
Would you say it's easier at kindergarten first than it is, say, at fifth, sixth?
No.
No? Okay. I was just curious, just because there's a big difference in.
That's for, from both, yeah, I would pick a five, six combo in a heartbeat over a K one combo.
They're more dependent.
They're more dependent, you can do them, you can start a kid off and say, this group, you need to work on this, this and this. Give them a short direction, then work on the other group. For kindergarten, sometimes it's a little bit more difficult. Okay, just gonna leave it at that.
Great, well, that's why I ask you guys.
Um, so I'm just, I'm confused as to if, so if matrix B has one additional teacher in it, why couldn't it just be that first grade has two teachers?
Because right now, um, third grade has a lot more numbers. Because we're losing a teacher in third grade currently, and we're losing a teacher in first grade. And so my numbers are smaller in, because I have thirty-two students in third grade.
Okay, so if this one's minus two teachers, why can't we just add a teacher right here?
Because we're already adding a teacher. The TBH, we're adding a third grade teacher.
So this is only down one teacher?
That's only down one, though.
Oh, I thought A was down two.
No, A is down two.
A is down two, B is down one.
Yeah, I was just saying.
Down two.
Now, now I'm confused on what I did. Third grade there, third grade there. Oh.
A is just down.
A is down, the, A is down one, B is down one, but we combined to let the numbers off on first grade, that's what I did.
Oh, okay.
So by doing the K one combo, I made the kindergarten class instead of ten and ten, I made fourteen.
And two.
So none, so none of these are down two?
A is down one.
No, just the last one.
And B is down one?
B is down one.
No, the last one has all of it. Yes, so we were creative, thank you, sorry. Yeah, so let me clarify that, then now I'm gonna rethink of what I did. So third grade, so A would be, we've just hired a third grade teacher, and we have all the first graders together.
So that's one Ester position gone, one, one staying.
One staying.
Okay.
Matrix B is we've made a K one, we made a K, a K one, and a first grade to offset the first grade numbers, so there wouldn't be twenty in a classroom. We sort of balanced them out, fourteen, eleven, and fifteen. Still that second kindergarten, the K one combo being smaller, and then we're hiring a third grade teacher.
So same scenario, one Ester stays and one Ester's.
And then matrix C is we're hiring a first grade teacher and a third grade teacher. So both Ester teachers stay.
So if we were to cut both Ester positions, we lose a teacher from A or B matrix. So we would have third grade class of thirty-two students.
We couldn't have that.
Yeah.
We'd have to bring some more combos.
You'd have to do some more combos. Okay. Um.
And this is on your scenario two, correct? Like, you had the first cut with the surplus, and then you have.
Yeah. Do you have one copies of those?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Yes, Dave.
I got a few points, I guess. Number one, I, I think that's a pretty public document, if you're sharing that with things of form or needing, and I don't need to see it, but that'd be my opinion. Um, number two, I think the board should get around trying to figure out, instead of, um, um, talking about like individual teachers at this point, I, I'm assuming that it's probably gonna, that, that the legislature's gonna vote for you to, to do what you're doing, which is to review, re-vote, re-vote over. So I did a couple of points to make. Early on, you had said, um, that you might not be in favor of, of using all the surplus, and I don't know what A, B, and C does, does that or not. But I, I would remind you that there's still two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in an account. So that's point one. Point two, Brian said, had, um, uh, the principal had said, and I know that you built, you're trying to build the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. But in context with that, there's seventeen seventh graders, which is really important to remember. Because you could foresee a reduction in tuition by two hundred thousand dollars. So the need for money may be for something else, you might, you've just gotta look forward a little bit to that.
Yeah.
Um, but I think probably, this is a lot to take up for, for this one meeting. So I.
It was not gonna be decided at this meeting, we're just looking over the scenarios, and we would have another meeting.
I, I am agreeing, though, being in and out of the school like for a long time, that it is kind of important, um, to be able to keep the school. And so consolidating grades doesn't scare me, but it does, I just listened to the point that, that Brian made, which was, it does, and I know you have to fit the numbers together, but it makes a little more sense when they get a little bit more feet on the ground here, like later on, like second or third or fourth grade, rather than the K one. Although, I, I see the numbers, and they have to fit. Um, but I think the board should probably focus on, on having a few pictures that would say the dollar amount. Because I know through labor contracts and everything, you have to fit the puzzle together, or the administration has to, but board members don't. Um, and sometimes things happen through the year, particularly through, um, reading or math, it's on a federal level, where you could hire that. And it's a pleasant surprise. What you're, I think what you're trying to focus on now is the property tax rate, which is really hard to deal because.
It's moving target.
What other school, um, fund school, or that might be up in the air. I was a little surprised to hear early on that, that the result of postponing the budget and redoing it made it seven cents worse. The tax rate, I mean, it went from a dollar ninety-six up to two oh three.
Well, that's because, that's because they got rid of the cap, we were over the cap. Our increase was more than five percent, we were using the cap to bring us down to five percent, our increase was eight percent.
But the state that set the homestead at one ninety-six, right? That's the information that they gave us. And so I'm saying, sitting here, I'm going, how come we just didn't take that instead of two oh three?
Well, you can. It's up to the board to decide how they move forward.
Yeah, I don't know, I just.
It's complicated.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not gonna end up being one time.
Yeah, and I, and I mean, if people wanna see these matrix, we could probably, um, white out the teacher names and share them, but we can't put teacher names out to the public. Um.
But I would more focus on, like, you know, you, I think you're gonna have to come to the reality of what you think the proposed tax rate might be, and then it's going to have to fit whatever the administration decides as the operations.
Yep.
And, and then I think, I think Brandon's point too, about so much has been dispersed to the SU on half-lease, that they're taking that up. As far as the building, whatever goes on, buses, everything, that the SU affects that. So, I don't, I don't need to hang around, but you're gonna have, you're gonna obviously warrant another meeting or two.
We will. Um, some questions that I was hoping, you know, you've been around a long time, Dave. And I, and I know you have your, you have your finger on the pulse of Weathersfield. So, um, you know, I'm just wondering what tax rate you, you think the town would accept?
Well, one of the points that I really like to focus on is when we have things that adhere, held here at the school, that it's so much more than having just the parents and the grandparents here that have children here, that, that somehow the connection needs to be further saying that even if you don't have any children here, um, like Thanksgiving meal or something going on here, where people can come in and see what's going on in their town. Um, I know people that don't have any kids, and then they, they just kind of brush it off. But it really is kind of fun to, to be here, and then learn about what the cost is and about what is going on. It's a big deal. Um, but I didn't see any of the thing that you were talking about, um, it's pretty obvious that no one wants to pay taxes. But.
I'm, I'm wondering if you think, because, you know, what I was saying before about, um, FY twenty-two, we were actually at one point nine five. Um, FY twenty-three, we were one point seven nine. FY twenty-two, we were one point six six. Um, those two, past two years were artificially low due to, uh, rebates, Ester funds and rebates from the state, um, the education fund. Everybody wanted to be in Vermont during COVID, it was, you know.
Just really.
And they stuck around a lot of them, yeah. Um, so, uh, we had our moment, and it keeps going on. Um, but, uh, so, you know, I feel like expecting us to stay with a, in a certain amount of last year's extremely low number is, is, is hard to do. Um, I'm wondering if you, if you, you know, what you think about, you know, if Weathersfield residents would, would look back to the one point nine five and think that that was an okay starting point, or if we should try to be somewhere in between those two numbers?
Well, I would say between them.
Yeah.
Uh, but I would also do a lot of homework on any kind of federal, that's why I'm a little surprised to hear a state kind of just say, well, now we're not gonna fund anything, or, or whatever level is, I don't know what they bring back for state aid to education, not property tax revenue. What's available? I know in the past that we've had, um, reading and math grants here funded at a federal level. And there was always that funny feeling where we didn't know if we were gonna get them again, and then we did get them.
Yeah, we, we lost them a few years back, but there is the possibility, um, with the new way that, uh, it was, we didn't have a lot of people filling out those free and reduced lunch forms that were eligible. And, um, and it turns out that our numbers are actually much higher for, um, what's that rate called now? It's not free and reduced lunch anymore, but is, is the poverty rate, or?
Yeah, it's, it's not.
Or low, low income?
Yeah, it could be, but it could be.
But so, we, we may possibly be getting some of that federal funding back, but it's, we can't count on that right now.
And we won't know that until the summer. Um, Weathersfield's rate did go up, which is rate, rate went up, part of this went down, which is the opposite of what it's been. But I know, um, Ian Gisong, we're also expecting a cut in our title funds this year at the federal level, so. Can't count on it, we hope, we hope that we'll be able to support.
Yeah, so we won't be able, you know, we won't be able to present any of that to the voters, um.
But what our budget was one point nine, did it pass that year?
It passed that year, yes. That was my big accomplishment that year. That was, that was, we had a, we had a large increase that year in, um, uh, students going to the, high school students. There was, uh, I think, four hundred thousand dollar increase in.
People need to realize, things go up, nothing is cheap anymore.
No.
I mean, you go grocery shopping every week, I do. My, my shopping bill's a lot higher than it ever used to be.
Yeah.
Because of farmers.
Yeah. So, I mean, I.
Cost a hey.
Health insurance is up sixteen percent, right?
Sixteen, sixteen point four. Um, yeah.
Year upon year.
I mean, my, my usual goal is to stay below ten percent, um, you know, no matter what. But I, I don't, I think that that's gonna be hard to do this year. Um, but, uh.
I would say, I would suggest not, maybe not considering those two articles that, that are potentially, because I don't, I don't think you're gonna be able to, when, when it actually comes down to it, to be able to open a new account for one that already exists for the, to keep money in there. I, I, if I was sitting up there, I'd probably be happy with the two fifty, it's already there. Um, rather than making any reduction to whatever the plan was now, that helps you a lot.
Yeah.
Um, because you're not going to zero. If I was going, if I was looking, if I was going to zero, I might feel a lot differently.
Uh-huh.
I, I know I would.
Okay, well, thank you, Dave, we appreciate you.
Okay.
Yes, um.
Oh, I'll keep it, I, I think that you're, you're gonna have a couple more meetings, because you'll have this on New Morning.
Yeah, 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 and definitely if you see Flo and I don't know, I will be in touch.
We talked before.
Okay, great.
I just have two comments. So first, I totally echo going back to Brandon, going back to the SU, so, I think everybody knows from the Budget Advisory Committee, I was totally against the SU budget. So I think the board of the Weathersfield School Board needs to sort of make a big president of going to a board meeting and sort of be voicing their concern, because we have, uh, I think, one representative when that vote got voted on for the budget. So, and I know we have one member on the budget committee for the budget, but still, I feel like that's a little bit not in our favor by any means. Um, so just sort of echoing Brandon about asking the SU what their take on this is, and if they're gonna look at cutting some of their Ester funded people that they got via Ester or doing whatever, you know, we're looking at cutting two teachers.
Well, we, we may, we may not have to, that's why I was, that's why I was talking with Dave about if, if he thinks that the, that the voters would, um, you know, could go with, you know, upwards of, you know, ten, eleven, twelve percent increase, we could keep those teachers.
Couple of years, right? So like, I'm just thinking, like, we barely passed votes, so, yes, it's great, but just keeping that in the back of our mind, right? Like, we are making huge cuts for the Weathersfield School, like, that are impacting our children in the Weathersfield School, in our school building. Like, the SU board who votes on this budget needs to be made aware of that as well. Like, their budget impacts.
They, they are.
Their budget, you know, has impacted our budget, and if they're not made to make any cuts, it's not really fair to the school, in my opinion. Um, so secondly, on the Budget Advisory Committee, this is all shocking news to me, right? So I guess, I know Budget Advisory Committee's not needed, but it is something that the Weathersfield School does have on their thing, so. Not really sure what the purpose of the Budget Advisory Committee now is, because we weren't involved in any of this.
I asked if they'd be invited.
No, you didn't.
No.
We, we didn't even make, weren't involved in any of the suggested cuts. So we have, the Budget Advisory hasn't been made aware of this projected change in the budget, so I guess, I think I'm the only one in the advisory committee attending the meeting today. So, a little bit shocking, and you know, I agree with a lot of Brian's suggestions of cuts, but there's probably some other areas that I would have suggested looking into.
And these were cuts that I looked at to be able to come up with something on Friday.
Yeah, and I know it's been like a moving target and stuff like that, but maybe, I, you know, I just.
Yeah, I think for our next meeting, we would definitely like to have the Budget Advisory Committee there to give their opinions, um.
And should they have a presentation ready with cuts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or.
So.
Yeah.
So you may have to meet.
Can we forward this to them?
Before.
Yeah, we can, we can forward these cuts to the Budget Advisory Committee.
I can do that, I can forward it to them, and we can look at matrix without name on it as well.
Great.
Um.
So it sounds like, just for clarity, to, to give us direction. Are you looking, if you could give us a ballpark of where you want the tax rate to end up? Yeah, it's easier to prioritize, um, what gets cut, and how much, how deep to go?
Yeah. Um, I mean, if.
Some of this, though, to me, is not even.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't choose.
Huh? I just.
I had to look somewhere at things.
No, I know you did, but I still think it needs to be a discussion, I'm just not okay with some of this.
And this was just a list that I came up with on Friday, looking at, coming up with something, and the sky was falling. So these were numbers that I came up with, things that could be the least impactful possibly for students.
But you're also putting in five hundred and fifty thousand plus dollars, which Emery says she's not comfortable using all of that.
Right, I, and like I said on Friday, I didn't know that information.
That were.
That I'm looking at the information, so.
And those were prior to the, prior to the yield changing.
Right.
So the yield changed on Friday, which, which actually brought the tax rate down about twenty cents. So it was twenty cents higher on Thursday.
Uh-huh.
Which was, oh my God, what are we gonna do? So, I mean, I give Brian credit for thinking creatively, it's not anything we want to. So, I mean, I give Brian credit for thinking creatively, it's not anything we want to do.
Um, yeah.
So. And, but that's, I mean, it's the worst case scenario.
All those scenarios that he presented include that five hundred forty nine thousand dollars or plus.
They they do, I included that in there because that was an easier way to come up with a little.
And that's no, that's no cutoffs from Supervisor Union Office at all, that's just from us.
Those are just our cuts here at Weathersfield.
Plus the five hundred forty million.
Plus the five hundred forty nine thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars.
That's more than one point five million.
No, it adds up everything, it adds up from one point eight one and one point.
Eleven.
Eleven. Good view. And I'll have to try to make the least impactful on the people. We did, at the town, we did, you know, the inflation rate, we did pretty well known, it was like eight percent a year before, and now they're saying three and a half, so. Um, if you combine the two years, it's somewhere between eleven and twelve. The town has been able to offset some of the needs that we did by um. Um, putting in some measures that collected a significant amount of delinquent taxes. Um, Brandon's got it down to about a hundred thirty thousand, it soared to like five or six hundred thousand dollars of outstanding money that he owes us. That's helped the town keep its tax rate. Much lower than it's had to, and allowed it to uh increase whatever the inflation rate was.
So, when you tackle, sorry, go ahead.
I just was going to circle back from a month or two ago that um there was the waiver that Dr. Baker wrote. That approved for there to be still six members from Mount Scottney Board on the SU Board, three from West Windsor, three from Windsor. So, I I don't know that you can do it, but would there potentially be a possibility? To take that up as a vote to hold that waiver back? So that Weathersfield and Heartland have more equal say in the SU decision making? Would it only take a vote of the SU Board, a minority vote, to?
Personally, I I don't agree with it, um, just because West Windsor is its own town. Windsor is its own town, Weathersfield's its own town, Heartland's its own town, so each town is getting votes. Um, so so to me, it feels, it feels like if we'll be disenfranchising the West Windsor folks if. You know, we don't, if we take away half of Mount Scottney's votes.
Who would it take, I guess, maybe that's where I should go, who would it take? To initiate that discussion at the SU Board? Can a community member go and start making that point, bringing that information to light? Because my understanding is you all didn't understand or know that that agreement was in place, that that had been a waiver. Uh, because typically in in, it states in the law that once you merge to a school district, the school district has three SU reps. And Dr. Baker had to write a waiver to allow Mount Scottney to have.
Infinite waiver, or is it an expiration?
That's what I'm asking, and who, um, I I can appreciate and respect that individuals may not agree with it, but. Potentially, the constituents of the SU Board would have enough stake to um have them revisit it. So that then it feels like a third, a third, and a third when you're coming to a vote. Whereas when you're sitting in Weathersfield or Heartland, it's hard not to feel like we would never get to make change at the SU level. We will.
Uh, it's not that we never get to make change, because you, I mean, you'll see with this budget. Uh, we're actu- actually, Weathersfield is. Where we, we were really making out quite well compared to Heartland and even uh Windsor and Mount Scottney were doing better than.
You're just missing my point, I I just.
So, but I mean, when when we all have, when, if we can make alliances with other districts, like Heartland and Weathersfield come together. Then we do have the votes to make a difference, so it's more like we need to work together with the other uh members of the SU.
Again, I appreciate your answer, I understand your your response. Do we know who or how could start that conversation at the SU Board level?
I think, as in all board um procedures and rules, I mean, you can bring up something during public participation. The board has the option to address what you've brought up.
Right.
At the next meeting typically.
Yeah.
Um, it's in their purview, and so I think it would be up to the board whether they entertain it or not.
Right, okay, and so right now, it's it's six from Mount Scottney, three and three. Is there a tiebreak rule? Is there a way that you're?
I don't think we ever had it.
I don't think we have.
I'm not sure Holly's going to break the tie, but.
Whatever happened is different than what was to happen.
Yeah.
How does the chair, does the chair get the deciding vote, does, who gets, who gets that?
I'd have to look that up. Yeah, I'd have to look that up, yeah.
I would be curious to.
Yes, Dave, do you know the answer to that one?
Well, not only the answer, but I know twenty five years ago. Twenty five years ago, Windsor wanted to change the makeup of the SU, and I believe there's articles in the Corporation of the Supervisor Union. Um, they wanted to make it student weighted, they wanted five votes, one vote for West Windsor, three and three, or something like that. They wanted it annually to be, so it's to their vote, to to uh by population.
By population?
Student population.
It it is currently.
Wait, no.
Weighted.
No, right now, it's three, three votes Windsor, three votes West Windsor.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I was talking about the amount we spent.
I'm talking about the SU Board.
You're talking about the SU Board.
Yeah.
Ah, yeah.
So, there there was always twelve.
Yeah, that would be kind of difficult, though, because you'd have to have like a half a person.
Now, just going on current for a moment.
Yeah, yeah.
Since that uh a district within the union gets three SU members, and we currently have a waiver.
Yeah.
Allowing Mount Scottney School District to have six.
Yeah.
I think that was part of the merge agreement for West Windsor to give up their their local control, their complete local control and um.
But it is a separate.
Yeah.
It's a separate thing, um, I'm not, I mean, you definitely can bring it up, and um, you know, I don't know if it'll go anywhere, um, or, but um. I think it would be extremely unlikely that West Windsor and Windsor would vote for that.
Having said, having said what I just said, that that, I was on that board for a couple of years too, and and they they work. A long time to try to get consensus, so there isn't any arguing.
Yeah.
There might be a few points that come up that that hit the.
Now, we usually, we try to have things be a hundred percent.
You and where you sometimes can share, like, if you have, particularly if you have a teacher that goes halftime and halftime or something, there's always some kind of working arrangement that works.
Yeah.
Um, so.
And we worked with Heartland before on things like the food services, um, we both. Both districts felt it was important, since we're both sending districts, that we not pay for that for our high school students, so we worked together on that.
I understand.
And convince some other people to go.
The point is stating it, so right now, the twelve individuals decide to approve the SU budget, and then the local budget's just practically done. They have to avoid it.
Yeah.
And there is no fiscal responsibility to go back on the SU Board to make cuts there. I I heard you said that it's a possible discussion, but currently, it's not required.
Not required, but um.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. So, uh, I do think that we need to hear from the Budget Advisory Committee as far as um the cuts go. Um, also, and and of course, we don't need to make these decisions right now anyhow, um, that hasn't passed yet.
Sorry, in order for them to make cuts that are reasonable, we need to establish a parameter of tax rates that we're comfortable with right now.
Yeah, so.
So between one point six and one point nine is.
Yeah.
But pre-COVID, it's my opinion is pre-COVID, we passed a budget of one point nine.
Nine five.
Nine five, okay, we passed a budget of one point nine five. Pre-COVID, we're living, pre-COVID, again, mostly now, with inflation.
Yeah, right.
So, uh, you know, reasonably, I vote start low, lower, and work higher if we have to.
Lower in terms of?
I mean, one point nine seems like it would be two point two today.
Yeah.
Right, and so now you're going to take, really, one point seven, maybe, is where we need to be looking at, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think as far as something that could pass, we could go as high as. Like a one point eight five, maybe, one.
And that's a ten percent range.
That's, yeah, that's eleven percent.
Yeah. So that's, so with this, if if the board chooses to use the surplus.
Mm hmm.
That's between a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar and a five hundred thousand dollar reduction.
That will actually, one point eight five would be less than two hundred and fifty thousand, just slightly.
Yes, but you're talking only partial of that, not the whole thing, right?
Are we now working, well, so.
Well, if, I mean, we could go, we we could use the whole thing, I'm just saying that we need to think about using the whole thing, because if we use the whole thing this year. We're just putting off some stuff to next year for ourselves.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do it, because this is, you know, crazy year, and we can just say it was a crazy year, and we had to, you know, so we did that. And and that is what we usually do, we usually give that money back to the voters. But now that I've seen what what artificially buying down tax rates does. To your future choices, I mean, we've gotten ourselves, we've dug ourselves into this hole at one point six six percent. That was not sustainable, we can't afford to to do what's right for our students at that rate.
Well, it's not even really realistic.
Yeah.
Based off of current times and.
We would have to cut a million dollars.
Right. For the appearance, for the appearance.
And use the whole surplus, use the whole surplus and cut them another million dollars, so that's.
Just to echo what Dave said, we still have money in the surplus, we're not going to zero.
Right.
So.
When the capital, we have money in the capital reserve.
It's a small amount for this size of building, but.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would, I would love to put a little bit more in it, because it was, we did use some of it, I would love to at least re, you know. Replace that money that we used, how much?
Do we have an average number that we might spend in a perfect year here, capital improvements?
Um.
And for mostly what?
We, yeah, since we've been here, we haven't had a lot of repairs, but we do need to do some repairs. We have some boiler issues that we need to take care of, we talked about the doors, taking care of those a little bit.
Yeah.
So I would say we probably need to spend about sixty or so, and this includes like the gym floor that we had.
Right.
Put on there as part of the budget.
Yeah, so if, so if we added, you know, sixty to, you know, took sixty from the surplus to put for. These need, these immediate needs that we know are going to be coming up in the next year, I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea. Um, but that means we have to cut another sixty thousand dollars off the budget to attain the same tax rate.
I mean, there is things, I mean, that are less impactful than positions. I mean, obviously gym floor. Furniture, things like that, to me, are at the bottom of the list compared to teachers and paros. And that to me is like a no, that's not an option, but.
Yeah.
That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, well, I think the, as much as I've always asked for it. Is this a proper time to say this? I mean, just the uh. Even though I've always pushed for it, I th- I think the world language teacher, since we've had such a hard time filling it, is is probably the first place to start.
Yeah.
Um, and and health education, I know everybody who's ever met me, I've been pushing for this since the beginning.
I feel like there are cheaper ways to accomplish what.
I think there is, I think there is too, through curriculum coordination, um, you know, more things being added in. Uh, with all the willing teachers that we have here, um, we might be able to accomplish some of that learning through them. Um, so that would definitely be another big ticket item, uh, that despite.
That's almost two hundred thousand, right?
It, yeah, I mean, I'm I'm looking at that, the the gym floor, yeah, um.
It's not dangerous currently, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
So it, it's the, oh, and it's also the resurfacing, it's not, we're not talking about lines.
Right, we're not talking about.
We're starting the interview.
Okay.
We're talking about making the courage to more.
Safe.
Okay, can can you do me a favor? Since, since we're, I've, I've, I've seen the the tacky strips and whatnot left out by the stage, um, I I understand. I'm gonna, I'm gonna rescind, I'm gonna rescind my suggesting that, because that.
I did not hear that it was a safety issue.
I also don't know, because I I haven't seen what the budget is for and what intends to be done. I think it may have involved some repainting of like the the lines, that could be cut.
Right, yeah, so if we can.
The breakdown is, that there is a safety concern.
If we can, if we can hit the the safety concern first, so if it's a resurfacing, and then if it's the aesthetics of the line, we can wait for that. But for me, if we get resurfaced floor and we lose liability. For an injured student or staff or volunteer, that's well worth forty thousand dollars to me. I mean, so I I I look at that, and that's, that's a cheap, uh, that's a cheap.
And then kindergarten furniture, is that a safety issue?
Not at this point, not at this time.
Okay.
We can make, we can make some adjustments in there, it is, some of the tables could be potentially pinch houses, so it could be.
Is that something that we could get a grant for?
Possible, yeah. So, that that will be four or five lines right there that I would suggest. Under scenario one that we look at straight away, and perhaps we can share that with the BAC.
Yeah, yeah, I would share with them.
Maybe we could just give them some direction of like.
Yeah.
Them, the, you know, the boiler, we need heat, so maybe look at little things that can't be changed.
Well, that that's, that doesn't need to be done right now, that was something Brian was saying would be within the next year, so that's something that we want to set, that we would want to set aside some extra money to the capital reserves for.
Yes, I know you want to put some of that money in the capital reserves. If you want the people to see that you're cutting money, I would take that forty thousand for gym floor. And put it in the capital reserve, money that you're going to save from the surplus. So that way, people will think that they're actually getting their money, and you're actually putting money in the surplus to go to capital improvements. I would actually stop that money from your surplus into capital reserves, and then take it out when you do the gym floor.
Okay, so you.
That's a capital reserve thing.
Yeah, it is a capital reserve thing.
And it's taking it out of your basic budget.
Yeah.
But it's just moving it into a different area now.
Yeah.
It's a good way to look at it.
Yeah.
Same could be technically through kindergarten furniture.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they need thirty thousand dollars worth of furniture either.
No.
No, no, no.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah. Yeah.
But the big concern is that gym floor, yes.
Yeah, yeah, we need to make the gym floor safe.
Of it, yeah, absolutely.
And then, yeah, and if there are some new tables that need to be purchased, then.
I just figured you moved from one spot, put it in another, you know?
Yeah.
Capital budget, it's just been a different area from the surplus.
Yeah. Um, I don't love to see the summer program cut.
Yeah.
I would like to see the summer program start making some money, though. I would love to see us advertising and getting some people from out of the area over to join us and pay. You know, a hundred bucks a week or something like that to.
We could do small D base, so we're looking at expanding as well, pause as well, so we've got a couple options, so.
Yeah. Um, because I think it's a great program, and if I was, you know, back in the day when I had littles, I would have definitely been signing them up for it, and.
Yeah.
I've paid way more than a hundred bucks a week to get my kids into a summer program, so.
Yeah. That seems like a pretty robust program for that little money.
Yeah.
And if that's.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see that cut.
It's all positive coming out of there, like.
Yeah.
It's absolutely, I love it, you know, yeah, it would be.
So that, that's a good yield.
It is, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Um, yeah, I'm in agreement with Mark as far as the world language goes and the health education. I do agree that we need um the health education, um. I would love to see that just incorporated in curriculum, though.
What, whatever happened to, I thought when we originally presented it, we talked about it being a joint position.
Yeah.
Within the SU, whatever happened to that?
within the SU. Whatever happened to that?
Well, that, this is quite a bit of a, you know, a ticket for us to take on as one smaller school. Yeah, that's if we had our own health teacher. Um, there hasn't been any movement as far as if others schools wanna join us on that, so.
If you, if you hired a part-time and another school wanted to, um, have a part-time, it could be one, it could be a full-time position.
I think Heartland's already taken care of. In that manner, they have their own health teachers, their gym teachers or that.
The PE teachers are certified as health teachers, um, and that's typical coming out of schools now. Um, sometimes the nurses help, sometimes it's built into the curriculum in other content areas. I know, um, we're gonna have to adopt a new local wellness policy by the end of this year and there's a, um, WSCC, do you remember that group? Whole school, whole child, whole community. So they're working on, on a policy that they'll bring to the board, I think in March, and part of that policy talks about health education and how you're gonna incorporate it. So Angie's on, she's, she started working with all the players in terms of a, a robust health curriculum and how does that get implemented without health teachers per se, because we've been trying to hire one at high school for two years unsuccessfully. There's no applicant, so I don't think it's.
I think if a high school can't get one, I don't see a.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it would be really hard to fill, but if it was filled, it could still be a, a combination between schools. We talked about bringing the nurses to the SU level, um, and the nurses weren't ready for that just yet. That's where that kind of stalled as part of the conversation around health.
Yeah, um, does anyone else have any guidance they want to give to the BAC?
Want to? Um. Let me ask a question, just for clarity. So just in terms of numbers, that's how I'm thinking. With the surplus or, um, partial part of the surplus, we're looking, it looks like we're, we're looking to cut around eight hundred thousand, is that about right? With the surplus is two forty-nine, or five forty-nine and the two fifty gets you one point eight. So that's really eight hundred thousand dollars total, with, with whatever part of the surplus you're willing to put.
Yeah, I mean, if they come to us with that amount, we might be able to do a little better than that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, yeah, then if they come to us with some things we don't agree with, we.
Yeah, it's helpful to stop a.
Yeah, yeah, um.
And, and your thinking is using a good portion of the surplus but not all of it?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, um, yeah, if we, maybe like a hundred thousand.
Goes to capital reserve.
Yeah. And then move the gym floor and the kindergarten furniture out of the budget and.
And those two positions might get you close to.
Uh huh.
To that amount. Okay, that's helpful.
Um, I will need everybody to keep an eye on their emails because it's probably, as soon as this passes, I'm gonna call a meeting, okay? Um, and.
Just not next week, Brian and I are away.
All right.
Not together, but.
Oh, you guys have taken off next week, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, um, yeah, so, yeah, as soon as, soon after. I don't, I don't expect it to have passed by then and get signed by the governor.
Back full of energy, ready to.
There you go. Um, yeah, but I would definitely set up some BAC meetings if you can, Brian, after that following week and
Yeah.
make sure that they're involved in this because I, you know.
Monday when we get back.
We have them for a reason, right?
So just to clarify, so we're moving forward with making some adjustments, passing the budget that we currently have. We're not talking about not voting until a later date.
No, this, this would involve voting on a later date. This is chart, this is, any changes we make to the budget are, aren't included in the current.
That's right, okay.
So.
But the state's picking up the tab for the additional.
The state is, the state, state is supposed to pick up the tab for a new, yeah.
Right.
All the new.
Yeah, we have to make sure you get that in quickly, though.
So for Ann's listening, it's not.
Well, we are, so we will.
Yeah.
Yes, there's some things to keep in mind.
Uh huh.
It is halfway through February.
Yeah.
It would have to be posted before March fifteenth.
Yes.
Before March fifteenth, then having to vote by April fifteenth.
Yes.
Four months, that is the main thing.
Yes.
Because it has to be posted thirty days. So it's really a big time constraint that we're under.
Yes.
Can I add one?
Can I add to that? April fifteenth, um, just so you know, so that you are aware, our CBA requires that all contracts go out by April fifteenth. So if this isn't, if we don't have a budget before that, we have to rip our entire staff, which is not, um.
So, so when, so when do we, so do we need to vote before the fifteenth then?
If you could, um, if you could vote by March ninth, that would be thirty days prior to April ninth, I believe.
Vote March ninth? Uh, uh, oh, you mean us vote here?
Yeah, uh, no.
Town vote?
So you gotta post by March ninth.
Okay, yeah.
And then you vote in there before April ninth would be great, so. Tina needs a little bit of time to get the contracts together.
Okay.
Okay, for.
Throw another. For a school town meeting to take place on April ninth.
Yes.
What day of the week is that?
It is a Tuesday.
That is Tuesday, okay.
And it's a seven day, you have to warn a school or meeting for seven days in advance, or is there any like?
This can be, this can be an emergency meeting, we can do it on a meeting.
Be twenty-four hours.
Um, so hopefully this will all get decided and the governor will have signed it by March eighth at the very latest. And, uh, and we will come together and get that done on March ninth, um.
And then get it warned.
And then get it warned on March, yeah.
Election.
Yeah, yeah.
All that stuff.
So, um, okay.
You know, Florenzai is willing to help us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, um, yeah, so everybody keep your, keep your eyes on your emails, um. I'm watching the legislature like a hawk. Uh, I was hoping they were gonna vote today, but apparently it had to go to appropriations first because there was money involved, so. Uh, it's gonna be tomorrow, um. Let's see, do we have anything else today?
Yes.
Oh, yes, we do, okay. All right, um, so is everybody good with that discussion? Or sort of know where we're at and I don't think it has to be horrible, and I don't, you know? But, uh, and I, and I, and I do appreciate that now we can have some sort of effect on the tax rate. I really felt unmoored by the fact that we couldn't, there was nothing we could do before. It's not how I like to, it.
Doesn't feel good.
Doesn't feel good, that we, we couldn't have any say in what our tax rate was gonna end up being.
And it's really hard to sell in terms of public trust because you're telling people, no matter what we cut, we're not affecting our tax rate, so.
Yeah.
It's nice to be able to get it.
And when we don't understand it, how are we gonna make all the voters understand? So, yeah, I just, even though this means we have to make some cuts, I, I like it better, um. So, and hopefully the yield will only continue to get better because I, I, I hope other boards are doing the same thing they're doing. Um. Let's see, uh. Yeah, you can let Ed go, um, yeah. Um, all right, so let's move on to items for discussion, which we have Hicks Nichols at the top of that.
Yeah, so Hicks Nichols has two applications that we have approved at this committee, so we are coming to the board for their final approval. What's the need for with these? Um, the first one is, uh, flexible seating by, um, requested by Desseveret for her fourth grade class. Sixteen plus students, um, she's asking to get some yoga ball chairs for her, um, fidgety, fourth grade student. Um, so the, her request was, um, for sixteen chairs for a total of one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. But since their request has come through, the shares have actually decreased a little bit in cost, so it might not be the full eleven hundred dollars. Um, the committee did approve for her spent up to the eleven hundred, eleven one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars to purchase those chairs. Um, she's hoping that they will, you know, sort of poke with her challenging behaviors and keeping them sort of moving and, um, entertained a little bit during class to, uh, prevent more, less, to help less interruptions during class.
Is there, I guess there's some kind of like data to back up that these chairs do that?
Well, they have, I mean, they're the bouncy ones, um, she did her research, um, and these ones are like, actually like they're chairs, so they're not like the ball that they're gonna be bouncing around. That's where they're like, they're stationary, um, chairs, and if a ball happens to break, you can like get a replacement ball for her, so you're not, you know, the actual chair car's there and it wasn't, so, um. So, um, she will do some assessments, so determining how many, um, breaks are needed, um. Uh, she sort of referenced the new ELA program is really challenging, um, and this is just hoping that these balls, her rent, you know, help with getting through the ELA curriculum.
Okay.
She's had a couple in her room for quite a while.
Uh huh, and they do that?
Yeah.
And I know there was like, the PTO like did a mini grant and approved some money for like bouncy bands and stuff like that, just sort of fidget stuff.
Yes.
To keep it.
And what was the total on that?
Um, up to one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for sixteen chairs.
Okay.
Um, so then our second application, um, was put in by the PTO. Um, they were requesting, um, assistance with electronic community sign. So I think the board has, that had sort of been brought to the board before. Um, and so the price in their quest for that was, I'm trying to figure. It's like I've done for the day, um, fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, and that would be for the sign, the shipping charge and the data, uh, the modem to go with it. Um, any additional work would be paid for through the PTO's fundraising, so electrical, um, site work, anything like that, there's really not any site work that's gonna get mounted to the side of the school. Um, this is funded by, through Brian, we sort of talked to Brian about it, um, PTO, you know, sort of get their diligence. The Hicks Nichols Committee, um, gratefully approved for all fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars um, for that. Uh, there is the funds in the Hicks Nichols Committee Fund for this.
That's from the interest money? That's not going into the principal?
Um, can I just clarify something, Jess, not that we've been talking about that? I was a trustee for many of years.
Mm-huh.
Um, we as a school only get the interest.
Okay.
We never get any of the principal.
Okay.
Trustees are responsible for investing that money.
Okay. Okay, um, do you know who the current trustees are?
I do.
Okay, I'll get that list.
Jess, do you want to explain where the signs are gonna go on?
Yeah, yeah, I would like to know also like what the rules are on that town.
The sign is going to be three feet, two inches by sixty, four inches. Um, the plan is that the sign will be mounted on the wall above where the bike rack is, so like where the the banners usually go for like the library stuff, um, so it's, if you're looking at the door, it's just to the left of the door, it'll be mounted on the wall there. Um, with this sign, we can do up to eleven rows of text. It is all controlled, um, via an app. So whoever has access to the app can change and add, so nobody has to be physically in the school if we needed to put something up there. Um, it can be dimmed, it can, you know, change colors, they can do whatever, um, it wants, so. Um, anybody's driven by Springfield School, they see how bright their school, crazy school sign is down there.
Yeah.
Um, but this is, you know, we can, if we needed to, we could shut it off in the after, you know, evening hours and folks had it, but, um. There's not a lot of place to advertise stuff for the school. We are limited, right? So we have a little board, um, that's right outside the door, which you can't see when you're dropping your kiddos off coming into the school. Um, we do have banners that we put up, but we can use the sign for the letter. You can, you know, put their Easter egg cards up there. Either PTO can throw all their events up there. We can remind parents that it's early on Easter. Um, we can wish our kiddos happy hundredth day of school instead of, you know, trying to drive in steaks into frozen grounds.
Your body wanna vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, and the other thing is, um, another big thing about it too is promoting kids. So Windsor does a great job, um, about doing an employee, our teacher of the month, and they had a glass at there, so every time you drive in, you can see who the teacher of the month is, they do student of the month, so their names, so you know, you can wish kiddos happy birthday, like just trying to boost morale in the school as well, um, and using it for all sorts of different things, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it as long as it's not as annoying as the Riverside Middle School. I mean, that's pretty obnoxious, uh, but yeah, um. Yeah, and, yeah, I would definitely want, I mean, just for the people that live nearby, wouldn't want it on overnight or past a certain time in the evening, yeah.
We wanna work with our neighbors.
Yeah.
So the, um, the actual control over the sign would rest in whose hands?
Most likely the administration, the office.
Okay, so it's central office, or, stands me, Brian. Brian, BJ. Okay, so it's our school staff, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think, you know, obviously you have a PTO, probably Jamie as the president have access to it along with, you know, Brian, Harry, BJ, school staff, so they need to put something up there, but I think with it being a PTO sign, it also, you know,
Yeah.
want to show off the PTO's app. They probably have a little bit of control of that.
Oh, that, that's fine by me. I just, when I heard anyone with access to the app.
But at least we can grant more people, you know, it wouldn't just be a sole person that would be having to do it at a computer.
Well, and it, it, I think it's also got a place for emergency address system as well, um, or hey, watch out, ice storm coming, whatever you got.
Um, let's see.
Can I make a motion for those two?
Yeah, sure, I just had one, I just had another question about it, but I forget what it was, um. I can't think of it now, it'll come to me later, I guess, um. Yeah, so I guess, yeah, if you wanna make a motion to approve.
The two proposals from Hicks Nichols?
Yeah, okay. So Mark made the motion to approve the, um, one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for yoga chairs and the fifteen thousand three hundred and, what was it?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven dollars for the sign from the Hicks Nichols Fund. Um, any further discussion? Okay, uh, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Hicks Nichols is looking for, I don't know, remember, the junior committee, so if anybody knows.
Do we, do we have a current school board member on? Oh, you are, okay, great. Sorry, I forgot who we had on there. Okay, um. Let's see, uh, curriculum, curriculum, curriculum information from staff.
Um, so first I want to just thank all of the teachers that met with Sarah and I earlier today to discuss curriculum. Um, I'm not sure exactly how detailed we, we want to get into, um. There's obviously issues with curriculum, um, sounds like both from English and math, um, depending on the grades. Um, speaking of the, the language, um, it's too difficult for students to access. Overall, teachers are really looking for permission consent, and I'm not sure if it's us that can give them that permission consent, if it's an SU. Brian, like I, I don't, I don't know who gives that permission, um, but to be able to, to teach at the level that their students need to be taught at. Um, feel free to jump in then anytime. Uh, the language includes science and social studies. However, it doesn't meet the, the actual standards of science and social studies. Uh, there's concern that the curriculum takes so long to teach that we're missing out on being able to teach like Vermont history or Weathersfield history. Um. From the Eureka squared perspective, it sounds like there may be a lack of materials issue at times, um, that the staff was told that paras and special educators don't need access to the materials, um. That the curriculum was, they were told that the curriculum was very easily scripted, uh, but they do not agree to this, that there's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes and, and behind the scenes in order for them to be able to teach it. Um. Um. I mean, I think the clear, clear message was a lot of it is very difficult. So again, they're trying to follow the rules and um, really teach it as is, but it is not necessarily equitable across the board for their students. Um, and so, again, they would like to kind of meet somewhere in the middle with permission to um, be able to, you know, tweak the curriculum enough that, um, the other thing was that it's very just text heavy. So um, there's not a lot of fun in it, um, or going out of the box as teachers to teach it. Um, a lot of the students, it's hard to keep their attention. Um, and a lot of the grades, it's just not necessarily age appropriate on where they are developmentally. Um, so that's a concern, and we're talking like lower grades, um, even down to kindergarten level. Um, for second grade, it's just, again, where they're at developmentally. It's not necessarily um equitable uh for them, and the teachers are really struggling with that. Um, they're doing their best. They're all, um, again, trying to be great teachers and, and follow, um, you know, the curriculum, but they're just looking to make it more towards their students. Um, there's also been a lot of mixed messages, um, where, you know, some are like, it's non-negotiable as far as like how to change it or that you can't change it, and then others where it's adapt to it. Um, and this is across like the S U levels. So, um, you know, bits and pieces from other districts or other teachers where they're um told they, you know, just kind of do their own thing, but again, our teachers are trying to stay the path, but it just doesn't seem that it's working. So um, also going back to just the piloting of the program, um, and the data, um, they disagree that it was not necessarily successful, um, but it wasn't necessarily there, it wasn't listened, you know, they, nobody necessarily listened to their thoughts and concerns about it. Um, and it just was implemented anyways, and this is across the board. So, um, all the grade levels, which is difficult because as we're building on each grade, um, you know, second grade's difficult. Then by the time they get to third grade, it's even more difficult. So, um, there's a concern there for, um, you know, if each grade is struggling, then the next year they're gonna be struggling again. Um, how that looks, you know, building upon that, um. Yeah, there's a lot. Um, so we're just bringing it forward to try to, I mean, we want our students to be successful. We want our teachers to feel supported and to be successful. And um, I think it's definitely an issue that needs to be addressed, how we go about that. Um, probably looking to you, Christine, um, for guidance, but.
Yep.
That's our, that's our feedback from them. And I do have some emails from parents that I've been gathering because they had heard on our meeting that we were going to be having this meeting before the holiday break. Um, that, you know, we kept separate from today, but, um, so different things that I'm just holding on to for further discussion.
Yeah, and, and Angie's here tonight, um, Director of Curriculum.
Uh huh.
And so I've been taking notes and we'll, 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 we'll meet and talk through this. Um, just to clarify a question, did you have, um, K eight teachers? Was it a majority?
Yeah, um, I believe one, almost from every grade, it was quite a turnout, yeah. Yep.
Um, Angie, I don't know if you wanna say anything tonight or you'd like to come back next month? And hopefully you're still awake.
I'm always, I'm driving and I, I have, I've, I've heard the whole conversation and I would appreciate the opportunity to respond softly, um, after we have time to reflect on what we've heard. Um, that, that will be, I have nothing else to say, sorry. Like I wanna make sure that we have time to think about it. And if there's more to be shared, um, that, that would be, um, really nice so that we can respond fully and, um, softly.
So.
I can put notes into an email.
Yeah.
We can.
That'd be great.
Do that, yeah.
Okay, thanks Angie, we won't put you on the spot tonight. Back to your driving. Okay, um, alright, so we will, when we get to setting the next agenda, we'll add that on there. Um, so then I also wanted to, um, we need to approve asking Brandon Galnick from the town office to review the S U budget for us and see if, what he comes up with as far as possible cuts that we could request or talk about at the next S U meeting. Um, so if somebody would like to make a motion or if they wanna talk about it. Does anyone have a problem with asking Brandon?
No, but I just, I just, I guess I wanna clarify from last meeting, we weren't sure. Am I remem, right in remembering that we weren't sure like his reach with that?
Well, it, um, we had a meeting and there is a law that allows us to ask him.
Okay.
He cannot come at us with these questions.
Right, 'cause I remember there was.
But, um, if we ask him for his help, that's fine, that's, that's in the law.
Just help with numbers, you're saying, or just?
To, to just review the, review the budget and see if he sees any, if he has any recommendations, yeah.
So can I just ask if he does have recommendations that we agree with and we ask for cuts at the board level, we still could, could be totally outvoted for that and it wouldn't matter anyway?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, there's no guarantee here, yeah.
Yeah, so we're possibly putting him through a lot of work with zero result.
Yeah, he has agreed to this though.
Okay.
I think what I took away, one of the things I took away from that meeting that we had with him, um, some of the process he wasn't aware of. So we, we talked through that, what it looks like and, and the rules around it and school funding in general. Um, he, he said he gets a lot of community members that come in asking questions about the budget, the school budget, and he can't answer them because he's not informed about it. So I think one of my big takeaways was communication, um, with, with the town manager about the budget so that he can support it to, and, and that's what he said, so he can support it to the people that come in and ask questions.
Which we have been asking for, yeah, I mean, we're all on the same team.
And, and he can review and I have no problem with that, anybody can review, it's on the website.
Right, I would say it's public knowledge.
With knowledge, um, I do pause with, you know, a lot of work goes into that with a lot of experts in the field of, of education and what we do. So if he has questions about something in the budget, I would hope that he would come to the people that are developing the budget with those questions. And so that he can be well informed about why the things that are in that budget are in it. Um, I think we are fully transparent about what's in that S U budget, we are not hiding anything. It's a, it's a well, um, thought through budget and there's, there's not padding in that budget. I mean, we are a small operation where everybody's doing a lot of, um, of work, so that's just my two cents. Um, who would Brandon contact if he has questions? Larry?
Larry.
Larry. Okay, um.
Carrie has a question?
Oh, yes.
Uh, I, I sort of have a statement and a question. Wouldn't it be that Brandon at any time could be attending the school board meetings and get all of that information?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so therefore, why would we not afford our board the opportunity and the B A C to review the S U budget or potential suggestions on cuts when you all have been working the numbers from day one?
That's how I kind of feel, I just.
I, it doesn't make sense to me why we would, why we would ask someone who has not otherwise shown an interest in learning what our budget is in his town for his constituents and his taxpayers to be able to answer. I, I fundamentally think that that is disregarding the work the B A C and you all have done.
Well, I mean, do, does the B A C have any recommendations of cuts from the S U budget?
They haven't had an opportunity to look at anything.
We've been told that the S U budget is the S U budget.
Yeah.
We don't look at, we, I mean, we looked at it and, yeah, I, I did some items.
I mean, the only thing I can say is that this has come up very suddenly and there's not really a lot of time to.
Which is why I'm wondering why you would entertain bringing in someone who's so disconnected from the process and.
Well, 'cause he offered previously to do it and he said he had, he said he found things in there that he thought.
But possibly the B A C and the rest of the board also could have.
Yeah, I mean, if, if I can make a recommendation that moving forward, we also forward the same documentation to the town manager since he specifically requested it and also to the B A C as a whole. That way it's automatically forwarded to them, that way it's, it's, it's right there, there, and nobody has to try and track it down through the portal. Because yes, the town manager and anybody through Freedom of Information has access to all of these numbers if they can track it down, or they have the wherewithal or the connectivity to track it down, so.
Or they just ask for it.
Right.
Well, I was just gonna say, what, who is coming to him asking questions? I mean, it's pretty out there, I mean, these meetings, the town meetings, our meetings, our agendas, our minutes. You know, you miss the meeting.
You can watch it.
It's all out there, so I don't know what questions he would be getting that couldn't be answered by being more aware of our meetings.
Right, that would be nice.
Yeah, right, um, so I just, I don't know what, I mean, other than that he may like numbers, he may be good at it. I'm not saying that he's not, I just, I don't necessarily, I agree that I don't, I don't understand, I don't know why we have to vote on what he matters as far as that goes, but.
'Cause we have to officially ask him, he can't.
Ask him what?
To, to review a bud, to review the budget.
But why would we ask him, is what an ask?
Well, we, yeah, we don't have to, that's.
I just.
Anybody can review the budget at any time.
I was gonna say, I mean, it's all public knowledge, the S U budget is on the S U website. Um, and if he has questions, he could ask Christine or you, and I feel like the representation to the S U, being us or the public is the ones that should be asking the questions or proposing any cuts. I, I don't know what the town manager necessarily has anything to do with that, but.
Well, I haven't, I haven't heard anybody suggest any, I don't know, there isn't, there hasn't, like, the budget was set and, you know, we told the B A C that. So I understand that they weren't looking at the S U budget. Um, we have very little time now to look at the S U budget, as we've seen with the dates that we have here. We will need to move on this at the next S U meeting and really that's our only opportunity.
If, if it's even a possibility that the S U budget could be cut, what would that even look like though for this budget season, anything?
Um, if, if the S U budget needed to be cut, it would have to be cut before you could figure out your local budget.
Right.
Part of your local budget, um, so, yeah, there is a timeline in place and, and I don't think anybody's not willing. Um, and I think, just so you know, from that meeting, we did agree to be more collaborative with the town, with the town manager and, um, make sure he knows that the budget is out there when it's out there, and it's out there pretty early. Um, so we do, we do wanna have a collaborative working relationship, but we're not suggesting otherwise. But, um, I thought the conversation that we had was more, um, moving forward. What are we gonna do differently to make sure people are informed and, um. It just occurred to me that it was, like, since we need to do it quickly and since he had offered and he, he told, like, this is like what he does, what he does, like he went to college for and all that sort of thing. So just given the timer constraints, to put it to the B A C, I mean, next week, people are off. We have, we have like no time to do this. So that was my reasoning in that at least, you know.
I mean, I, I think that we should take his advice, we don't have to use it.
No, we don't have to listen to it.
Listen to his recommendations.
I mean, we have to, yeah, listen to it, but we don't have to follow it.
And the B A C, all of it, I mean, we can get as much data right now and as quickly as we can. And if Brandon's wanting to do that in the next few days, he's not on vacation, so just let's see what he thinks. Um, it doesn't hurt anything.
Yeah, that was my feeling, just that, uh, you know, just that it, just, just because we're under such time constraints.
And my, my recommendation moving forward was not so much for this budget season, but just in terms of procedure from here on out.
Yeah.
And that I think makes sense, like, everyone, a collaborative effort to look at both budgets or possibly have a say in both budgets, but I just, knowing that time constraint right now, it's like to wait from here, from Bran, you know, from Brandon and B A C and us and try to make a decision, I just think that's a lot of, and what is exactly, what are we gonna be able to do?
I mean, I'm not even sure what we can do.
Well, that, that's my question to Christine.
I'm looking at the calendar right now.
My question was, if we have recommendations that we send to this S U meeting and we request, we would like to get this cut, what actually happens? Because we are three people, Hartland has three people, Malus Scutney has six people, are, are we, are they collectively voting on our personal?
Everybody's interested in cutting the S U budget.
So Hartland and Windsor is, are also gonna come to the S U, you have confirmation of that? That they're coming to the S U and they're asking for cuts?
They have spoken with their board chairs.
Perfect.
They are discussing, there'll have to be a vote on it whether or not it's reopened. I will say, we, while we appreciate, um, any suggestions, it's helpful to have a conversation about it because some of the parts of the S U budget, there might, might be information that, that people aren't aware of why that's there. So I think Brandon looking at it in isolation, I don't know if that doesn't make complete sense to me. If he sits down with Larry and Larry discusses all the ins and outs of it, I mean, Larry spent months on it. Yeah, is Larry available next week or he's off off? I think he is available next week.
But that's what I'm saying, it makes more sense.
Is it actually gonna happen if we go through this?
You know, as they go line for line and they're like, oh, I mean, I remember from being on the B A C, it's eye opening, right? So to me, he, he's gonna look at it as a numbers guy, but he's not even gonna know necessarily what half of it means.
Right.
Because.
True, and some of it.
It's not that.
It's out of our control.
Right.
We don't control transportation costs, we really don't control special education costs. I mean, kids with I Ps get what they need and that's, that's what drives that budget. Um, and so just like your local school budget, there's personnel. And, you know, what they do every day is important for you to know before we suggest cuts.
Can someone just say what, what, what would be the process? I understand how it works, but is it the S U board can vote to rescind their budget, rework and revote? Is that just the process?
Yeah, just like this.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking.
The S U board.
I, I felt like it was only, we were only asking for cuts and it doesn't work if, if everybody else is, I wasn't aware of that, so.
Maybe a dollar figure and that would then be up to you to say where that five hundred thousand is gonna come from?
They might, they may come back with, can you look at the budget and are there places where you could trim that? Because, um, it's just hard to know without looking at the budget. Yeah, I mean.
So similarly, it may not be a suggestion that you cut A and C. It's that we need to have collectively a reduction in the budget and then they revote.
Yeah.
Like we just told Brian, basically.
And, and maybe it makes more sense just to go to, just to go to Christine at the meeting and tell her, hey, we need you to cut a hundred thousand from the S U budget, and then she and Larry work out where that money's coming from. Um.
Yeah. But like you said, like, then it's, it's really not all that money because then we're splitting that up, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a lower amount.
Yeah. What I feel like, I feel like it is, it is real money, even if it's twenty five thousand dollars, it's, that's money.
Uh huh.
But also it's, it's showing that we're, it's showing that we're all in this together, yeah. It's showing that we're all in this together, it's, it's a summer program for us, it's, you know. So I feel like, I feel like it's a, just a good thing for the S U to do, to show that they're, that they're in it with us since, you know, we're all, we're all going for the same goal.
Stronger together.
And I just have a, I just have a quick sidebar now from something earlier, but, um, did I hear correctly that the S U didn't cut any S R people, but schools did, and about, and why was that?
Um, no, the, under the S U S R umbrella, um, we had the transitional kindergarten position, which is being cut next year. Um, we had initially.
So you cut, you received S R funding for employees and you cut those?
Yes.
No, not, not.
Okay.
The, the.
That's really all you want?
Maybe, maybe make sure I'm hearing you correctly. We, we cut, we're cutting the kindergarten, transitional kindergarten. Transitional kindergarten position will no longer be in existence next year. The other Esser-funded positions were the recovery coordinator, which we were, we were required to hire post, you know, COVID, and that position was not, um, cut, but it was, it, it morphed into our MTSS data leader, which is Brittany Preston. Um, and I will say that position is invaluable for the, the work we've moved forward. Um, and the other position that is Esser-funded is our diversity, um, our coordinator of diversity, equity and inclusion. And that position was continued in the SU budget for next year.
So there's only one position really that you eliminated that was Esser-funded?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we eliminated the one. Um, I will say the MTSS and data coordinator and the coordinator of diversity, equity and inclusion are two positions which, um, are, are in our strategic plan that the boards have wanted to put in the budget um, for the past several years, so.
We wanted our language of health too. We have to lose those, so.
Wasn't there programs that were funded by Esser though that got rolled into the budget as well for the SU?
The, the leader in the program was funded through Esser for the past three years. There is, um, there is a, a portion for next year in the curriculum budget for that to continue. I think it's maybe.
Angie's got her hand up, so she might have some of that. Angie? Maybe not.
Yep, maybe she is.
She's lost her.
She's driving, so, yeah.
She's driving.
Please don't talk while you're driving, Angie.
Um, okay, so, uh, I mean, we also, we also have not.
I just want to hear we're all in this together equally and it's not yet there.
Also, I just wanted to say that schools have not actually gotten rid of any Esser positions either.
Are, are we going to potentially?
Possibly.
Maybe after tomorrow?
No, no, actually, that was not, if, if we go ahead and, we don't need to. Oh, is Angie there? Angie?
No, she's not with me today.
Okay.
I mean, if you stay in the $800,000 coverage.
Okay, so that's.
My Angie.
Did you want to speak?
I wanted to remind you about the communications person too.
That is not, that is not Esser-funded. No, it goes, it's attrition.
It's currently Esser-funded. It's currently Esser-funded of the local budget next year.
There is a part-time communications person, thank you Angie, um, who has stipended, I think, $15,000 this year. That position is going to replace, uh, a tech. So one of our IT guys retired, so through attrition, that, that position is going to be communications IT. So it's not an additional position. So the one position in the SU budget that was added for next year is the coordinator of diversity, equity and inclusion.
Yep. Okay. Um, okay, so, so I guess given time constraints and stuff, we're not gonna ask Brandon to review the SU budget this year, but we'll talk with him more about maybe doing it next year? Is that sort of what we're leaning towards? Or do we want?
On it, I just, I don't, I don't know how much time we have and how pertinent this information is thoughtfully.
Is he still on with us? We could ask him.
No, he's no longer.
Availability is.
He's no longer, um, um. So, I mean, if. Uh, the, the time is, is short, but, um, but he and Larry would have time to work together next week. Um.
It's like it's eliminating seven important people in the process. I had.
So does someone from this board want to work with Larry?
Yeah.
What's the likelihood that we're gonna, I mean, because there's one SU board meeting that at this meeting, we're gonna vote potentially yes to reopening the budget and also being able to review the budget and make changes and improvements?
I would like it if, I would like it if Christine and Larry came with a couple of ideas so that it could potentially happen all in one night, because it needs to. That's the only way it works. Yeah.
And when is your meeting?
It's the, Monday afternoon.
It's the 26th, February 26th.
And if, if possible, if you have a recommendation, could it be a line item or two that we can vote as an SU up-down? Instead of reopening and trying to hash through with a million questions, all of these things that you guys have already poured through? That we, I mean.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Or could, could it even just be a dollar amount? Just, because we approve the budget for a certain amount, we just would approve it for.
What I would like to propose, that I do, and I'm not opposed to doing that. I want to check in with, um, I want to check in with Bill. I want to check in with Nikki.
Uh huh.
Just to make sure everybody's on, on board and then, and Davis, yeah, sorry. I forget Davis. And then, um, if the, if the consensus is come with that, then we'll do that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And if not, it's just an observation. If you don't have the approval of the board chairs, then it's just, hey, in future years, this is something we might cut.
Yes. Yep, yep, okay. I will do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Nikki, gosh, I was forgetting one of them. Yep.
I just have one more statement.
Yes, Carrie.
And the, the, the law, if I understand it, is that the SU board does not have to be adopted until June 30th for the next fiscal year, correct? So it, it potentially could always be contingent on local budgets passing. That's correct. Thank you.
So it's, it, correct, so if, if all the local budgets fail, it makes sense to open the SU budget. Um, I'm happy to look and come with observations. I think that does send a message. We're all in this together.
Yes.
But, um, yeah, when you open it is.
This could potentially, I know the situation doesn't, isn't unique, but it could avoid this sort of situation in any fiscal year if there are.
It can, yeah. So the SU budget needs to pass before the local budgets get established because the SU budget is part of that budget?
With language that it's contingent on.
Well, I don't know if there's language there, but with the knowledge that you can open it up again.
Yeah, yeah. So we would, we could feel as a community that we can vote and have a say on the SU budget versus only what there's.
I think I'm following you.
I think you are.
Would it only be reopened if all of the, all of the local?
That's a great, that's a, yeah.
If I understand it, all of the districts have to agree to that.
Because what was constantly here though is this is what you're stuck with from the SU level, which is frustrating if you're on the budget advisory committee, which I have been on, or when you're on the school board and you're talking about tough things and you're like, well, them up here, you know, they didn't, they didn't, that's, not that, I'm not saying that you can necessarily do a lot. Same as we can't always do a lot without, in not feeling good, right? But the point is, we're having to revisit, we're pressing Brian to revisit, everyone's pressing each other to revisit, but then SU's like, no, this is just your piece of the pie. You have to take it. And it's like, I think that's what everyone's message is. Everyone needs to open back up and look at what we can change, possibly as a group, because we're all, again, in this together. So I think that's where people are feeling like it's just unsettling or not fair because it's like, well, if the SU level doesn't have to necessarily make changes, but we're forced with all these changes that are directly affecting our school personally right here, so.
Totally get it. I don't think it's come up. I mean, we, we researched it to find, to find out if, you know, the, the rules around it. Um, I think we've been fortunate in this SU. Our budgets have passed for the last 20 years. Um, and it's a tough year, so it came up and we looked into it. So I apologize if that message was given inaccurately. I don't know where it came from, um, but.
No, and I know it always passes and ours tends to pass also, but then on these harder years, where we're having to make big changes or we're seeing numbers that, you know, everybody's stomach turns, then it's, you know, everyone's gotta kind of push back a little bit.
And I think the message, to be fair, has been that the SU assessment is what it is. I think we hear that all the time after month after month.
I, I believe that, Carrie. I don't know that it was researched. I think that was an assumption that was made. Um, because the question came up here. I, I went to the people I work with and they're like, I don't know. So, so we looked into it, so now we, now we know.
Well, it's definitely not public knowledge that it can be reopened up until June 30th. That is not a message that comes from the SU for sure. Uh, I understand why, but, um, maybe it should, maybe there should be more transparency like that.
Okay. Um, okay, so, so what are we doing about Brandon? I gotta decide. It's getting late. Actually, 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 we need, we do need to wrap this meeting up according to rules and regulations. We're supposed to be done by now. Um, so, uh, so are we going to let Brandon off the hook for this one because it's too late? Or do we want for him to just look it over quick with Larry? Do you think it would be helpful to you or do you think it'd be better for just you and Larry to get together and figure it out?
I think it would be better for Larry and myself to get together and figure it out, to be honest, but.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm okay with that. Is everybody else okay with that?
No.
Okay, and I will talk to Brandon, let him down easy and, uh, and, uh.
He's always welcome to look at it.
Yeah, yeah, and he can look at it and, uh.
Yeah, he can come to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Futures.
Yeah.
It would be great, but right now we're in a little.
Yeah.
Hell.
Okay, yeah. All right, um, we did want to have an executive session to go over some embargoed numbers, but we're running late, so. Is everybody all right? Do you want to stay later or do you want to do it at our next meeting? The scores that have been embargoed?
What is embargoed?
They can't be released publicly. Just the individual results can go out.
Is there anything pressing that can't hold till next time?
It, it's not pressing at this point. I mean, that they are where they are.
Okay, we just asked you.
We're starting testing, uh, you know, into March again for this year. So maybe they'll be embargoed prior to that.
One embargoed.
So why are they embargoed?
I'm, I'm here for you.
Why are they embargoed?
The state hasn't released a.
Good question.
Because they're so busy with funding.
They're so busy simplifying the funding schedule, yeah.
I guess let's move it to the time zone and round it up, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, and then no other reason for executive session? Okay. All right, uh, setting the next agenda, so I'm, I mean, our next meeting is, this is, is gonna be.
March 12th.
Yeah, our next official meeting is March 12th. Although there, there will be another meeting before that most likely. Um, that is our organizational meeting, so we need, well, maybe. This is all maybe. Um, if, if we have voting, uh, for school board members, then we will have a new organizational meeting. Um, and, uh.
Appoint your school clerk at that meeting?
Appoint.
Or do you do that?
Um.
That voted on here.
That's the organizational.
The organizational, we, I know we like name the newspapers. I forget what all we do, but.
Or positions are done at or.
Yeah, yeah. We vote on using Robert's rules.
We're small.
But if you haven't, you're saying if we have to push out everything, then we're gonna be.
We may not be organize, reorganizing if we haven't voted on new school board members at that time.
So we'll put it on and pass it over if we don't.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um.
So you don't appoint the school clerk at that meeting? Somebody run for that position?
Somebody runs for that.
Okay.
The town clerk at that meeting.
Oh, no.
Influencer?
No, um, maybe I mean the moderator.
Oh, the moderator. That's, that's town. They run in the town meeting. Um, let's see, uh, we. What?
Admin report.
Yeah.
Admin report.
Hopefully be something else besides budget.
Um, I mean, we may be discussing our postponed, uh, school meeting, uh, with the new.
Revised slides.
Um, yeah, it's kind of all up in the air. Um, the one thing I do know we wanted to put on there was, uh, you were gonna come with some answers for the curriculum.
Yes, yep.
So I wanted to discuss curriculum.
Yep.
Um, yeah, so I think, I mean, it's probably gonna be more budget stuff, even though we don't want it to be, but it probably will be. Um, we will hopefully already have post, posted in, uh, a new, uh, article by then, new warning. Um, but, uh, we will need to discuss how to, how to sell it to the town. So, okay. Does that sound good?
I'm just gonna put dates for budget.
Uh, yeah, I'll figure it out, yeah. Okay, um.
And we're all planning out an emergency meeting.
Have anything else they needed, they would like, um, next conference meeting?
No.
Okay. All right, I will take a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Okay, Mark made the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's make sure we have, um, all the documents that have staff names on it. Back to BJ, please.
Yes.